Happy New Year, and I will be the Chair for this evening's meeting. I am wearing my 12 Days of Christmas tie and a chair lapel pin. As co-Chair of the City of Sammamish Planning Commission, I hereby officially call to order the January 3, 2019, meeting at 6:30 PM. We will now have roll call beginning at the southwest corner of the dais.
Eric Brooks.
Mark Baughman.
Rituja Indapurie.
Lori Crandall.
Roshi Noferal.
Jane Garris.
The minute should show, we have a core and present of six members of the Planning Commission, and the minute should show that Chair Collins has a pre-excused absence from tonight's meeting. A note for those in attendance, the meeting is being televised live. The Chair will now entertain a motion of approval of the agenda for the January 3, 2019 Planning Commission meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion before us and a second to approve the agenda for the January 3, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Those in favor of approval of the motion signify by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, voice no. The agenda for the January 3, 2019 Planning Commission meeting is approved by a vote of 6 to 0. If there are no additions or changes to the minutes of the December 3, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, the Chair will entertain a motion of approval of the minutes as distributed.
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the December 3, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Those in favor of approval of the motion signify by stating yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, voice no. The minutes for the December 3, 2018 Planning Commission meeting are approved by a vote of 6 to 0. The next order of business is public comment for non-agenda items. Is there any one present would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, we will now move to old business. We are at old business, and this is a work session on development regulations. As a review of the items on tonight's agenda, we are continuing our work related to a set of development regulations that were originated by the City Council and have received considerable drafting by the city staff. Hopefully, we will all have had the opportunity to carefully read the various information concerning development regulations, including a comprehensive input by Commission Member Brooks. Expectantly, all of us have also had the opportunity to read the information concerning mass grading. Now, here's the important thing. Tonight, each Commission member is encouraged to provide their views and input on each of the items. Please feel free to express yourself. The plan is to have a round robin type of comment session where each Commission member will have a couple of minutes to share and ask questions of staff, and while rotating to your left, and if you select a pass, you will be able to re-enter the round robin if you raise your hand at any time. The concept is to begin with the Commission member seated on the north end of the dais and rotate each topic to another Commission member. The Chair's comments at this time is that the regulations will eventually become city codes. Some view codes similar to therapy. Whether it be physical or mental therapy, it should be both corrective and preventive, but most of all importantly, of value. Okay, Jane will start with you. Oh, no, it's staff. Excuse me. But Jane will be first. She's at the north end, so now we turn it over to staff. So, Michael.
Thank you. David Pyle, Department of Community Development. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to start off with a little bit of background and then build up to some of the question points that were included in Exhibit 1 with the agenda package for tonight. So with that, I'll start with a little overview. If you recall from some of the last meetings we've had here, we've talked a little bit about where we've been with regulations, and I think the biggest one that's an indicator of where we've been is the minimum interior setback that's listed there, which historically had been five feet in the city. Some of the others are 10 feet of front setback and how we measure building height. So in 2016, those rules were changed. The rule in 2018, prior to the passing of the interim development regulations in September of 2018, the city was using for the R4 zone, which is the most common zone in the city, a 5, 7, 15 interior setback combination. That was changed with the interim regs, as was the base height method of measurement, the setback orientations, among other things. This is a demonstration of what the interim regulations included, which when passed initially had a higher number with regard to some of the setback settings. Those were dialed back on November 6 at the point of the public hearing with the City Council, where the City Council decided to reduce some of those settings. So now, we're here tonight to talk a little bit more about some of the rules that were put in place with the interim regs, some additional ideas that had been passed off to staff by the City Council, by the focus group that the staff had organized and held, and by the Planning Commission in its discussion on these issues. So to start off with, we wanted to talk a little bit about orientation of setbacks. Historically, the city had used a system of street setback and interior setback. What we are proposing and what we have included in the interim regs is a migration away from that and a use of what we see as a more traditional type of setback that other cities use, which would be a street setback, a side setback, and a rear setback. One of the items that you'll see further on down in this presentation is whether or not we should be converting the street setback to a front yard setback instead. That's a question we have for you, so you may want to think a little bit about that and what it means. The issue there is that not every lot always has a street setback, so by defining it differently and considering it a front, rear, and side, you think about how a single-family home operates. Someone takes access to the home from the front. They can walk down either side to the rear. Now, understanding that geometry is not always perfect, you can see some of the odd-shaped examples here on this slide. So we would be drafting code that would address these odd-shaped scenarios, and we would bring that back on January 17 for your consideration. So we will prompt the question as to whether or not you would like us to migrate away from the use of a street setback and into the use of a front setback. A classic example of this is along the East Lake-Sammamish Trail, where you have the East Lake-Sammamish Trail corridor, and there are many homes that front that corridor that don't have a street in front of them. So the question is, well, is that an alley? Is that, what is that? And we are commonly presented with challenges in how to interpret that based on what the property owner thinks it should be called. So it would help us in that type of instance by no longer using the term "street setback" and instead using the term "front setback" or "front yard setback," if you will. The next was, we were asked to bring back some examples around how the interim regulations might affect development. How might a project that we've seen built in the city ultimately play out if it was to be subjected to the interim development regulations? So this is an example of an analysis that we did using the original set of interim development regulations. So admittedly, we have not run another analysis on these projects where we've applied the modified interim development regulations, so those interim rules that were passed under Ordinance 471. We are only looking here at those rules that were passed under 468. However, those rules were more restrictive. So those rules that were passed under 468 included larger setbacks. So this analysis is based on the larger setback scenario, if that makes sense. So what you'll see here is, this was the original plan for the Bradford Place project. And this, what we did was, we took the plan, and we looked at the individual building permits that were issued, and we measured out the single-family home footprint sizes that were actually placed on these lots. And we did an analysis based on the setbacks at the time, so the 10-foot front yard or street setback, the 5-foot interior setback. And you can see in this table here, we have the lot number listed, the lot size listed, and the available building envelope. So this is the area that is outside of the setbacks, that is available for construction. So you could, in theory, absent any other regulation, build a home with the footprint of that size. Now, we also have stormwater rules, impervious surface limitations, lot coverage limitations to consider, so you probably couldn't achieve that. But if you were doing a straight comparison across the regulations as to what building envelope could be achieved based on different scenarios, this is what you'll be seeing here. So this was the original rules, the 2013 R4 regs. This was one option we looked at with the 2018 interim regs, the first round of interim regs, where we were applying the increased setbacks, so I believe a 20-foot front yard or street setback, a 20-foot aggregate, so 10 and 10 side yard setback, and a 25-foot rear yard setback. So in this case, you can see that the building envelope that could have been achieved if we were to maintain the more than 3,000 square foot footprints that they were building in the previous plan. So in this plan, you can see the low range and the high range, 3,000 in the low range, the higher range was 3,700 with regard to footprint sizes.
Just to be clear, is that footprint just the footprint on the lot? That's not the square footage of the house being built?
Yes, that's the footprint of the house on the ground, correct. It's the, yep.
So if it's a two-story house, it's twice that much?
The size of the foundation, if you will. Yeah. So then, in this one, we took a look at how large of a building envelope would be available. We dropped it down to 12 lots to make the geometry work, to have extra space. You could achieve quite a large building envelope. Now, the interesting thing here is that in 2016, we added a 40% lot coverage restriction. So you're only allowed to have 40% lot coverage. And in here, you can see that there is a point where the building envelope size eclipses the allowed lot coverage size. So there's a delta where, you know, I guess it's a intersection point in the rules where the setbacks are no longer the controlling factor. So as the lot gets bigger and you're allowed to build a bigger footprint, the lot coverage restriction becomes what controls. And that's demonstrated here when you look at the low range and the high range, that there are some instances where even though you could build a 58-50 building envelope footprint, the lot coverage only allows you a 48-62 footprint. So that's an interesting point of information for some of these next slides, because as we look at modifying the design and still applying the interim regulations, you can see that if we drop down the footprint by applying the setback and rearranging the lots, redrawing the lots, if you will, you can still get 16 lots as was originally constructed. And you can still get a building envelope that ranges between 2975 and 4680. Now, the 4680 lot, you still can't even build that because you're limited to 3778. So if we're considering the impact of increased setbacks on the actual buildability of these lots, it's what we were doing when we designed the original setbacks that were included with the interim regs, is we were trying to find the crossroads of where some of the other zoning controls in the code met the setback control that we were targeting, if that makes sense. So what we were trying to do is find that spot in the regulations where you could apply a restrictive setback that was equally as restrictive as some of the other zoning controls that were included in the rules. So...
Again, just, I think it's important to point out that, which is what I've kind of thought about all through this discussion, this is still sort of suggesting that these houses, in comparison to what we're familiar with, can be 6,000 to 7,000 square foot two-story houses.
And they commonly are.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, I guess that's the point, is that we're not talking about restricting down to some kind of tiny house to make the number of lots, where we're still talking about 6,000 square foot houses.
That's correct.
And it still works in this particular example.
Yes.
And 16 of them.
Correct. So as we refined this down and we looked again at trying to apply the interim regs, we wanted to apply them as best as we could. Now, understanding that we don't have engineers on staff and CAD, and we're not able to draft these things up in short order, so we did our best with the tools that we had. But in this one, we wanted to see if we could actually apply the parking standard that was included in the interim regs and still get the full number of lots. And we discovered, and still maintain, the range of building envelope available that would offer a 6,000 to 7,000 square foot home, which is what we're seeing built often. So in this case, we've discovered that we could achieve 14 of these while still maintaining that home size. Now, you know, with that same comment, if you were to drop down the home size to, say, 2,500 square feet, where you could achieve a 5,000 square foot home, you could easily obtain the 16 lots that were in there. So that's sort of the path we're looking at. And again, we were targeting the increase in setbacks to intersect with the other restrictions that were in the code at a point where the setbacks were not necessarily causing the most restrictive control. You know, we were not trying to harm a design by applying these setbacks. We were trying to push a designer to do something a little differently than they had been doing. And that was the intent behind increasing the setbacks.
David, can I just ask an elementary question? So where you have the lot numbers, then you have, say, lot size 7788. So that's the size, that's the square footage of the lot before you put anything on there, before you build anything, right? And then the building envelope of 2836, that's, is that the footprint of the house?
That's the dotted square inside the lot.
Dotted square, okay. And then 40% coverage, that 3115, can you tell me again, what does that number mean?
That is 40% of the lot size.
That will be covered by the house?
That could be, according to the code, covered by the house.
Okay, that could be, okay, okay.
Yep. So understand, building envelope represents the limitation of setbacks.
The setbacks, gotcha.
It represents the limitation applied by setbacks. The 40% coverage represents just strictly 40% of the gross lot area.
And that's defined by structure coverage. 40% is structure coverage. A lot of times, they'll have impervious surface coverage and other things.
Oh, so that's included in the 40%?
Well, I don't...
So I think, let's go back, one more, one more. So if you see down there at the bottom, lot coverage, footnote 19, so it's structural lot coverage. So that is the percentage of the lot that you would be able to cover with structure. Now, that was also included in the regulations that were in place prior to the interim rules. That was not a restriction that we put in place with the interim rules. So if we hear that we're seeing more restriction through setbacks, the reality of that is that based on this analysis, the setback is not, at times, the most restrictive control. The 40% lot coverage was already more restrictive than that setback that we put in place through the interim rules. That is why we targeted that sized setback.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the 40% coverage. So that's obviously a smaller number than the building envelope. So what does that mean? So 40% coverage, that's how much of the lot is going to be covered by the building?
Yes.
Right, okay.
40% structural lot coverage. So the other one, and I apologize for flipping back through these, give me one sec here. The other one that's included is minimum yard area, which is often also seen as a fairly restrictive rule, as it limits the amount of hardscape that can be placed on a lot. That rule was already in place before the interim regulations were passed. So what that says is that you can have no more than 55% of your lot in the R4 covered by hardscape. That is one that is really hard for us to manage because oftentimes, we don't get reporting on that, unless someone calls code compliance because their neighbor is paving their backyard. We don't know about it. We only know about those that voluntarily come in for permits. So you might realize that there are many yards throughout the city that over time have been improved, hardened, if you will, with hardscape, and that is not compliant with the limitation that you can only cover 55% of your lot with hardscape.
So David, where do decks and patios fall in this?
It depends on how high off grade it is and whether it's considered to be a structure. So for those decks that are, I believe, less than 18 inches off grade, they're not considered to be a structure, although they would apply under the hardscape coverage.
Thanks.
So moving on to, let's see, interim...
Can I ask the last, was it this one or the last one? Were you saying that the parking was restricting the number of lots?
Yes, in this instance, so with this one, and like many of the projects that we had seen in the 2014s and prior to that, built out in the city, many of those projects were under the interim public works standards. And that was a time when the city was actually processing and issuing quite a few public works standard variations. So oftentimes, we would get a request from an applicant to build a half-street, not require parking, in order to, as the city saw it, I believe, and as the applicant saw it, not have to provide additional stormwater treatment and detention, because they wanted to minimize the amount of pollution-generating impervious surface, which is seen as a negative in development. So in this case, it's that balance of finding the right amount of parking and the right amount of street area to service a subdivision versus creating artificially too much impervious pollution-generating surface, which is where we, with the, and we'll get into this here in a few minutes, in our analysis of the public works standards and with my discussion with the city engineer, determined that the city's public works standards, the 2016 public works standards that are currently being applied to projects that we will see under construction very soon, we have not seen many of those yet, require a wider street section than the old interim public works standards did, and require on-street parking. And we are actually not, as a matter of policy, processing as many public works deviations because the process has changed and we're just simply not in the business of issuing variations unless they're warranted, unless they represent best engineering judgment.
That's great. I guess my basic question was, am I understanding this in that what you're kind of showing is that the setbacks really are not necessarily restricting the number of homes that could be built, but perhaps the parking in this case is because we went from 16 to 12?
Yes, the spatial requirements.
I think probably counterintuitive to what people thought, but it seems like that's what you're showing.
Although, if you look at the original, the amount of right-of-way dedication that was provided with this project was less than you might see under a current project. So under a current project, you might see this scenario play out anyway with this type of dedication, because for our purpose of calculating density, we do net density calculation in the city where we take out streets and critical areas and buffers, basically, to get net usable area. So in this case, if the public works standard required a larger quantity of street dedication, the resultant density would have been lower anyway. So, and this is sort of showing that scenario as to how that might play out under the current public works standards and the current parking requirement that's included in the interim development regulations.
So, all of this plan, this parking provided, non-street parking, it's not individual lot parking, it's just those two little stalls we're seeing there?
No, you also see along the street, right above those two little stalls, you'll see the individual parking stalls shown where they...
Non-street parking is the main driver of this?
Correct, as well as the street width requirement under the current public works standards.
So just to help me keep all this density of information straight, thus far, the regulation changes that have been proposed would not on the ground result in any particular hardship thus far. However, it may actually end up achieving some of the goals that we're all trying to achieve with less, I guess, imposing structures and these types of things.
It's a balance for us. We're trying to balance multiple objectives. We're trying to be conscious of property rights. We're trying to be conscious of community character. We're trying to be conscious of city policy regarding stormwater, regarding the look and feel of communities and how they're built. We're also conscious of diversity of housing choices, which you guys have talked about here, and we'll get to that here with some of the questions around detached accessory dwelling units. So with that, I could get into some of the non-conforming rules. I know there was a question at the last meeting around how the city's non-conforming rules apply to sites that might be made non-conforming by the passage of new regulations. So it's really pretty simple. If you have a legally established, developed property where you have a home located on the property, you can continue to maintain, you know, repair, expand even in instances where you're not increasing the level of non-conformity, that home. So what this says here is modifications to a non-conforming use structure or site improvement may be reviewed and approved. And generally, it's so long as the modification does not expand any existing nonconformance and the modification does not create a new type of nonconformance. So this is important because if you have an existing single-family home that's single-story and you want to add an additional level to that home, you could tear the roof off that house and add on a level, even if it was five feet from the side yard and the current rule says 10. So existing homes are recognized as legally established, non-conforming. They're given a lot of flexibility in how they operate. And most cities in this region have similar rules. I know I was responding to a customer inquiry where the customer was concerned that the city's non-conforming rules were unfairly treating them, and I had to point out this section. And I also did an inquiry of, I think, Bothell, Kirkland, Kenmore, Shoreline, Redmond, Renton, a quick assessment of all those rules, and they're all virtually the same as this set of rules are. So we have comparable non-conforming rules to other cities. The problem that we run into is where someone does an unpermitted expansion to a non-conforming structure that might make it more non-conforming, or where somebody builds something that is not legally established, and it is non-conforming, but for some reason, it has remained and it hasn't been removed, and they try to sell it or they buy it. That's where it gets sticky. hasn't been removed, and they try to sell it or they buy it, that's where it gets sticky. But that is something that wasn't legally permitted, it was built. Or there is an unclear permit path to that, which we do encounter. So I'm not going to say that there are not difficult scenarios that we end up in with regard to non-conforming structures.
Can you explain how it works over time? You know, I can see a house built 30 years ago, they want to add on, they get this relaxation. But let's say, five years later, they want to do another thing. I mean, is there some way that this is tracked through time so that you don't have this kind of slow process?
Yes, so generally speaking, so long as you're not trying to increase the level of non-conformity and you're just building on the existing foundation along the existing line of non-conformity, which is typically a setback non-conformity, or an impervious surface non-conformity, it's tracked through permitting, but we do not, at a point, reach because you're not increasing the non-conformity, right? So...
For example, the impervious surface, you can increase it up to 10% one year, and then a few years later, you can increase it again, it sounds like, perhaps, and that may be detrimental over time.
It says down there, "No subsequent expansion of the same non-conformance shall be approved under this subsection if the cumulative amount of such expansion exceeds the percentage." So that's tracked through permitting, permit records. The city does a much better job now than King County did in tracking permits. Not to their fault, it just was an area of the county that, you know, large acreage area, and they had to track a lot of permits. We can find permits on occasion. There's also missing records. The county had a fire at one point in its records center, and there's a whole generation of records that are missing because of that. I encountered that in my past place of employment where we were trying to locate old records, and the county told us, we don't have them, there was a fire, those boxes were destroyed. So if there are any more questions on non-conformities, I'm happy to answer it. Also happy to answer them again at the next meeting on January 17th if you have further questions. Or feel free to email me or call me, and I'm happy to find an answer to any question you might have regarding non-conformities. The next one is a question we had around daylight plane and whether or not daylight plane would be an appropriate tool in our code. It has been used by several jurisdictions. I believe some of you may have had experience with this. And there's two that were sent to me directly by commissioners, and I really appreciate sending those over. I have included those here. One of them was from the City of Anacortes. Those are the three graphics with the larger home. And the other is the City of Bellevue, and you can see the difference is listed there. The City of Anacortes requires a 45-degree daylight plane measured at the setback line 15 feet off the ground. The City of Bellevue requires a 45-degree daylight plane measured at 10 feet off the property line. They both have a little bit of a different outcome. I think it depends on how large your setbacks are. The City of Bellevue also applies its 45-degree daylight plane at 10 feet off the property line, 10 feet off the ground, in conjunction with a 7.5-foot setback on each side of the home. So you have to maintain a 7.5-foot setback plus the daylight plane at 10 feet off the property line, 10 feet off the ground at the property line. So we'll be presented with a question further down the line here as to whether or not we want to include this in our code writing. And you could consider directing staff to include this, and we could come up with a combination of these, or you could direct us to include one that you like better. The Anacortes one, as you can see, I think it does a good job with their graphic, and I really appreciated getting this from one of the commissioners, that it shows how it affects home construction. One of the comments from one of the builders that I talked to just this afternoon indicated that this is likely something that will cause an increase in the cost of building a home because it will cause a different type of framing. Because what you're doing is you're loading the home in a different location, and it's causing a different style of construction than if you were to build a standard two-story home that didn't have a step back. So that's one thing to consider, is it just requires a different type of construction. The next one is related to parking, and we had had a question regarding whether or not the city's public works standards already addressed the requirement that we have one on-street parking space for each new lot created through a short subdivision or subdivision. And this is the old interim public works standards that were replaced with the 2016 public works standards. And you can see here on the interim public works standards chart that there was parking required, that there was, let's see where we can find it in here, 57 feet of right-of-way for a local road or a feeder or a minor local road, that there was parking on both sides eight feet wide. You can see also that there's five feet of sidewalks, and there's other amenities required. If you get into the current standards, you can see that there's 60 feet of right-of-way, so that's three feet of additional right-of-way over the 57 feet. 60 feet of right-of-way required for a neighborhood collector or a local road, and that there is parking required on one side in the R1 through R4. So given that the most common zone in the city is R4, you might only see parking on one side of the street. Now, in talking to the city engineer, his analysis is, is that generally you would find the equivalent of one on-street parking space provided through application of this standard with one side of street parking, so long as the designer was conscious about meeting that requirement. So he agreed that it was a good addition to the code because although the public works standards in their requirements require the dimensional width that would provide for that parking, the way designers design projects does not always result in that being achieved. And the reason for that is the placement of driveways, the placement of curb cuts, the placement of amenities oftentimes precludes parking because of the clear zones that are required for people backing out of driveways, other amenities. So you may not find that, you might find that a designer will only incorporate a few parking spaces versus if they were pushed a little bit further to think about how everything fits together, and they would probably be able to achieve the number of parking spaces that the code is attempting to require. Now, the code, the interim regs, and then what will be in front of you in this question that will you're prompted with includes a few different options. You could build, you could place the parking on-street, you could place the parking in the driveway, or you could place the parking in a shared HOA-managed location. So what it's saying is that you need, for every new single-family home created, you need to provide the equivalent of one on-street parking space. And what that means is that we really want you to try and put it in the street, but if because you have spatial constraints or design complexities, you needed to place it in an HOA tract, or you needed to then put it in the driveway, that would be acceptable. We could create a hierarchy in drafting the code if you wanted us to, that said that they'd have to demonstrate that they can't put it in the street first, before they were allowed to create an HOA-managed area, second, before they were allowed to put it in the driveway, third. So we could do that if you wanted to. That's an example of a way to push designers to try and be creative in how they accommodate on-street parking, if you thought it was important to have that.
So would this increase impervious surface of a development if we added this requirement?
So in the event that they were placing it in an HOA-shared area, it may increase the level, the amount of pollution generating impervious surface. If it was placed in a driveway beyond the two stalls that are required currently, it may increase the amount of pollution generating impervious. But if it was placed on the street, it would likely not create that additional pollution generating impervious because, as the city engineer points out, the 60-foot of required right-of-way width is adequate to account for that parking. It's just whether or not the designer is able to consider that as a primary objective when placing things like driveway and curb cuts.
So will we be able to draft the code in such a way that the design will be forced? Is that what we're attempting to do through the code, and how can we do that?
Yeah, so when drafting code requirements like this, I like to think of it as sort of a, the primary objective is achieved, and if there were some reason for not achieving it, that there is a relief valve or an off-ramp from that requirement. So in this case, you could create a hierarchy that they have to demonstrate that it is not, they're not able to provide that. And then there would be secondary alternatives as to where that parking could be provided. And we have difficulty at times with projects where there are geometric constraints, other considerations that we didn't consider in writing the code, and we're left with a shall hard rule that we can't achieve. And that's where we run into a lot of complexity and stalls projects out.
Could we maybe with, if we were requiring, or if the designer couldn't accommodate it on the street and they were going to do that HOA tract where we have a couple of stalls for parking, that the surface for that parking was pervious surface? So somehow maybe gravel or grass or some, that it wouldn't add to the impervious surface, that it could be some kind of drainable surface that the cars would be parked on, that it wouldn't have to be just asphalt?
Yeah, so you could do that. My sense is, is that designers, one of the things designers are very aware of is the implication of adding additional square footage of pollution generating impervious to a project. So one of the motivators for them to locate the parking in the street on the already required right-of-way and to design the project appropriately so that they can locate parking on the street, may be the threat that they'll have to account for additional pollution generating impervious surface in their stormwater system if they were to locate that parking and create additional pollution generating impervious beyond what they were already required to achieve, provide with the public works standards. So that might be enough of a deterrent for them. For them, it's a balance, right? So what they're going to see is, they're going to see, oh, I have to provide this parking space, but I also have to account for all of the pollution generating impervious that this parking space will cause. And that is going to cause them to, on balance, try to find the best solution, the cheapest solution, because stormwater management costs a lot of money for projects. So my sense is, is that they will tend to steer away from placing it on something like an HOA tract unless they were already required to put in something like a maintenance apron or something where there's already some impervious being added.
Does Samamish worry about polluting pervious surface, like contaminating the groundwater?
Yes, we do, especially in the critical aquifer recharge areas. So we have had communications with the Samamish Plateau Water and Sewer District regarding infiltration and the treatment of infiltration before it's used. So there are ways to manage that. There are pervious surfaces through low-impact development that require a certain type of underlayment that actually collects the water, and the pervious surface is used as a storage area because of the angular rock that's used, there's voids in the rock and the water is stored there. That water is then collected through an underdrain and then routed through some sort of treatment system. So there are multiple ways to manage that. I'm unsure as to how we would handle a direct infiltration system where we had a parking area. I know that other cities where I've worked, we didn't allow you to park on grass, for example, because it was considered to be a pollution generating type of use, and they didn't want that on grass.
I think it's also, we've had some comments in the past about charging homeowners associations with maintenance of, whether it's parking areas or whatever. I think that wherever we can, we should probably keep it under public ownership, I suppose, just for that reason.
One thing you could do is when you're, when we're asking you the question around the parking requirement, you could direct staff to include a .5 parking space per new single-family home created. And that would create enough parking possibly in a division that it could account for things like parties or larger families or, you know, social events, that kind of thing. Or, you know, and at that point, once we've included it in the code, and as it continues through the debate around what should be included in the permanent regs, the debate is simplified because it's really just a conversation around turning the dial in order to calibrate it to be appropriate to what we want. So that's really what we're focusing on here, is there's a range of options. If we can get the concept right in the code, and the concept is one that then can be calibrated, it makes it easy to adjust over time. It's so long as we're not continually adding new concepts to the code, it's easier to adjust the ones that we have.
And the main concept, especially regarding parking that we are trying to add, is that designers do a better job of using the impervious surface the way it is already by using smart design to allocate the existing road, for example, or street for parking, or any other area. Is that something you're trying to do?
Yes, because they're not pushed to count parking spaces now, they're not pushed to think about how the driveways and curb cuts and all of those features interact with each other in a way that makes parking on the street usable.
Okay.
So we made it through the review of some of the topics and questions that you had had and that we brought back to you. Now we are at the point where we want to walk through the decision matrix that we had included as Exhibit 1 for tonight. The primary focus is on the issue and concepts like we just talked about. The secondary focus is the numeric settings, that's the calibration, if you will, setting the dial at the right setting. Consensus is not needed. What we're looking for is a majority vote on an issue so that we can know whether we need to bring it back, or if it's something that's not supported, we know that as well. We'll come back, for those that are supported, we'll come back on January 17th with drafted code language. We've also talked a little about, internally, a little bit about a future phase of the code overhaul where we could add a plan unit development section or a cottage housing section to the municipal code. And as we've talked about here, one of the objectives of prescriptive regulations is that there is, we are not presented with multiple discretionary decision points. We try to keep them as binary as possible, either you meet them or you don't, in order to provide predictability to the designers in how they're working designing projects. One alternative to provide for some additional flexibility or to get projects that are more creative, that might include different housing choices, that might include different amenities, is to create a plan unit development section in the code or a cottage housing section in the code. Those sections could be independent of these prescriptive standards and would be fairly easy to integrate into the code by simply creating a new section. Plan unit developments are something that ultimately results, in my experience, in a better outcome. They're fairly difficult to get through the process. So we would want to make sure that we have, as part of that code-writing process, the right criteria, the right guidelines. And they would always result in a hearing with the hearing examiner. But you could include things like, if you were to incorporate a diversity of housing choices, you get a 10% density bonus. If you were to include low-impact development, you get a 10% density bonus. If you were to include... If you were to include a landscape plan that meets a certain standard, you get a certain density bonus. So what it does is it incentivizes good decision-making on the part of the builder and it makes the, the additional expense of some of these types of features and design amenities in the, in the, in the plan actually be, become more financially attainable for the builder. Cottage housing, similar. It's something where if you built a certain type of housing, you would achieve a different outcome. So we'll be looking at those possibly in the future as potential additions. But again, the, the point here is that with the rules that we're looking at, we are attempting to keep these as prescriptive as possible and to limit the number of discretionary decision points for staff because that is where staff are regularly tested by members of the community or the builders or whomever it is that might disagree with interpretation on a discretionary point. So the clearer it is and the simpler it is for those rules, the better. If we want to create a whole nother section of code where we have more discretion, then we could do that, but that's a different system altogether. So the process would be, we'll walk through the questions. You can ask any clarifying questions, deliberate on it and vote on the issue.
So David, can I go back and just, one of the overarching questions I had, kind of related to what you were just talking about, is how, and perhaps you've described this and I wasn't, I didn't catch it, but how does the, these regulations apply to townhouses or duplexes or anything that's different than a single-family home?
So the code-
And actually, I'm sorry, the other question I think that I had asked was ADUs as well, which is somewhat addressed in here, although primarily on the setback side when it's a detached ADU, but, you know, there's also instances where you have an ADU that's built into the structure and I don't know if those are probably different or, I guess I'm just curious about, beyond just the typical single-family home, how do these things apply?
Yes, so, so the example of setbacks is a good one. I think that's one of the ones we'll have probably more conversation on here in a few minutes. But setbacks applied, they're structure setbacks, so they apply to all structures. So they would apply to whether it's a duplex, whether it's a townhome, whether it's a single-family home, whether it's a detached accessory dwelling unit, whether it's a shed. Anything that qualifies as a structure, the city's definition of structure is pretty broad. So we would be applying the structure setbacks to any structures. One potential outcome is, is that there was an option presented by one of the commissioners regarding incorporation of some dynamic setbacks that respond to the home size. So one thing the commission could direct us to do is to go back and draft some code that looks at treating single-family detached housing or single-family detached structures, primary structures, as different than other structures. And what that would do is it would, it would apply that dynamic setback structure to single-family detached primary residences. And then you could also apply, for example, a different setback scenario to detached accessory dwelling units. One of the things we've heard from the commission is that we're interested in promoting different housing options and one of those is detached accessory dwelling units. So if the commission was interested in promoting detached accessory dwelling units in the city, currently the city regulates detached accessory dwelling units to no greater than 1,000 square feet and there are, among other restrictions. But you could apply, for example, a five-foot rear and side yard setback to detached accessory dwelling units. And that would be unique to detached accessory dwelling units. So that's not a problem, we can draft that, it's pretty simple to write up. You could, for example, apply a dynamic setback to primary, single-family residences, detached primary, single-family residences. You could apply, in addition to that, a different setback to detached accessory dwelling units. And then you could apply a standard set of setbacks to all other structures. That's one way to do that. And we could write that in code pretty simply, it's not that complex. And that would be something that would be easy for staff to apply.
Just before David gets started, good evening, Planning Commission Jeff Thomas. Your chair, Shanna Collins, obviously is absent this evening, she's still traveling out of state. I did have the opportunity to speak with her a little earlier today and she was able to have a chance to go through the packet that you're considering here this evening. And she conveyed some comments to me on the different items, again, that David will be walking you through here, starting with density rounding related to the code update. What I'm going to do is, as the commission goes around and makes your comments on the various items as we move forward here, if I'm seeing something in the notes here I've taken, that Shanna has conveyed to me that is significantly different than what you're discussing, I'll, I'll be sure to chime in representing Shanna to convey those comments to you. If her comments are substantially in line with what you're discussing and the direction that you're going, I'll probably just remain silent and allow your discussion to move forward, so. Thanks.
Thanks, David.
So the first of these, the first question is, should the code allow density rounding? And that's rounding to the nearest whole number. And initially, we were presenting you with the option of yes, you round up or you round down, or you round up for short subdivisions or you round down for long subdivisions, or you round up or down for projects that integrate diverse housing options, and we would need to define that. Or as an alternative, you allow rounding up for projects that incorporate the extra unit granted through density rounding through the construction of a townhouse or duplex. The code, the zoning code does allow the construction of townhouses or duplex in our R1 and R4 zones, and R6, I believe, too. So we, we would actually be allowed to do that. And you could apply that unit of density to those projects that would include those types of housing units. We also received an additional proposal that we use graduated rounding, and this is a system that is used by the city of Portland. And what this does is it's, it's graduated rounding that is responsive to the size and scale of a project. And the graduated rounding would be responsive to the impact that it would have on the community around it. So in the case of, you had a small project, one to four units, you would need to achieve more than .9 units of density to round up. So if you had, if you had 1.91, you would get two, for example. If you had 3.91, you would get four. And then it goes up accordingly, you know, four units to 10, to 10.99, they use .75, more than 11, it uses .5. You might consider setting the limit at one to four and then four to nine, given that that is the threshold for a short subdivision versus a long subdivision in the city. So that anything over nine units would require that you have more than .5 to round up. So what that would say is that you, you, you would be promoting, you'd be promoting rounding up with long subdivisions and you would be deterring rounding up for short subdivisions, specifically short subdivisions of one to 3.99 units. So that's one alternative. So in, in the discussion on this, those seem to be the alternatives that we've heard so far. So if there's any comments or questions?
Excuse me, thank you, David. And I'm looking at the time and probably everybody else is, we're here to accomplish some things, so let's get started. And Jane, we'll start with you.
Okay. When I go through this, I, I basically see three things. I see environmental issues, character issues, and our housing strategy issues that included affordability and diversity and attached housing and all kinds of things that allowed for diversity in Samamish that we don't have now, that kind of fills the gaps and needs that we need to catch up on. And I'm a little confused because our housing strategy has not been implemented and I would, so here we are with these issues that seem all to fly in the face of each other. If we are really worried about character or environmental issues, it seems to cost more and it creates this inability to have affordable units and things like that. So it seems like we have a conflict. And so what I would like with this is, and it's not prescriptive and it's not clear and it's not simple and it doesn't make it easy for staff. By the way, David, I think you've done a wonderful job laying this out for us in such detail, I really appreciate it. So I can look at it and I can say, I like the ones where we round up to get affordable housing, to get rentals, to get smaller sizes, to get attached units, and we round down if we don't get our housing strategy. I don't know if that's legal because we haven't passed housing strategy yet, so I don't know how that, that's impacted. So that means I would like either A-C, A-2-C, or C-1. And of those two, they seem to be the same to me. I can't tell the difference, so maybe you could explain that and I would pick one.
So A-2-C is kind of to be defined. So we could say that if you're, if you're integrating affordable housing of a certain type, then you can round up. Now realize that rounding up isn't really gaining you that much. You're getting one additional unit, you know, depending on the size of the project, it could be a lot depending on, but if it's a big project, it's not much. So builders might just look the other way with that, but it's, it's a place to start, right?
With a short plot, it's kind of a lot.
It can be a lot. Item C.I. really is specific to you, to a builder, including, so say they got an extra unit, well, that extra unit would have to be paired up with one of the already achieved units and they would build a duplex. So they wouldn't just get another lot, they would have to take one of the lots that they already achieved and then they would create a duplex or a townhouse unit out of that, which is, again, diversifying our housing choice. The one thing I think I've heard is that we have an abundance of a certain type of housing and we have a lack of other types of housing. And so what we were looking at here are simple ways to try to start to promote, even though we don't have a housing strategy that's been implemented yet, we're looking for ways to try to start to promote builders adding some of these, these different housing choices, even if it's one unit, two units, into their developments.
So David, how would this be implemented? Would the developer come in during the design time and say that this is how he would like to implement? How can we implement this just by adding density rounding to the code? Because you, I'm, I'm sure you can't force somebody to do that, right?
Item C.I. would, would be pretty simple. Really what they would do is they either be, they'd either be required to round down if, so say they came in and they had a nine lot, or say, we won't do that, an eight lot short plot and it was 8.52 units, right? And based on the current interim reg, they would get eight. But if they were to build seven standard single-family homes and one duplex that was on two lots, so it was a fee simple duplex with a, you know, a common wall, they would then be able to achieve nine units total, two of those would be in the duplex.
And now I'm concerned, or I'm, I'm thinking about, you know, the character of that community, right? Where you have eight or seven single-family homes and then just one duplex. How does that affect the character of our community?
The, the, the rules as they're written or ready address that. So the rules kick you over to 21B, the Town Center rules, and the Town Center rules are fairly specific around townhomes and duplexes with regard to design criteria. So basically, you would have to design the home so you couldn't really tell it was a duplex. It would have to have certain features and characteristics around how access points are established and there's some good criteria in 21B and I'm confident that we could apply that. The code already applies it. We just haven't really been confronted with builders that have wanted to build. I think there is one project, it's called Rose Terrace, it's right behind the, the Boys and Girls Club over off of Inglewood Hill Road over there, kind of go up this long driveway and they've included quite a few duplexes in there, using that provision in the code. So if you wanted to go take a look at that, you'd get an idea of what it would look like. There's also some other incentives in the code for townhouses or duplexes, if they're affordable, that lets them count as half a unit of density. So if a builder was to come in and say they were at 7.52 units and they were to come in and say, hey, we'd like to come in and build four affordable units, they could actually then achieve, the, you know, the 7.52 pushes them to eight, the unit seven and eight would be affordable, then they would get unit nine and 10 out of that.
You want me to go?
Okay. Well, my thoughts on density rounding, and I went back over and looked at a few old city council meetings on this issue and just to kind of get some, just kind of refresh my memory on this whole issue. And one thing that kind of came up was when we're starting to compare ourselves to other cities as to whether one city does this or that, that we have to kind of look at it in kind of a wider view because some cities have rounding down, they have minimum lot sizes and they have net density. And we don't have minimum lot sizes right now, we have net density. So the whole thing of rounding up, rounding down for subdivisions and for long plots kind of seems academic to me. That's why I'm more in favor of the C-alternative-I, that I'm more interested in encouraging developers to think about providing more alternative housing and different types of housing. And so I'll be more in favor of C-alternative, until maybe we have that broader discussion of minimum lot sizes, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you. I guess it's my turn going south here. I'm kind of, after hearing the discussion tonight and what I've read, I like Alternative-C.
Thank you, Larry, that was nice and short. So I, I think, you know, giving developers extra incentives to sort of help us fulfill our housing strategy, I think that's a great idea. But I would also want us to look at the density rounding from a environmental perspective and see how we can potentially incorporate the density rounding that maybe the city of Portland does, where if it's really not possible for, for a subdivision to accommodate, you know, if it's rounding up to 3.9 and adding that extra house is going to cause more detriment to the environment, then, you know, maybe we should think about just having three houses on that lot instead of having four. So I would like to see that alternative as well. And then in addition, you know, how can we incentivize developers to either construct townhouses or duplexes to supplement our housing strategy, which is really to diversify the housing supply that we have in our city, but then also, you know, to help create the workforce housing that we need in our city. Thank you.
So I'm going to be a little bit of a naysayer, but first I want to start out and, and I admit that I have struggled with this one, to understand the practical reality of what, what this is really going to do. It feels to me like, and clarify this if this is wrong, but for a larger development along, that you're talking about potentially one extra house in 20, 30, 50, it doesn't feel like it's substantive. And in a, in a small, if, if you're really getting small, then you may have some instance, right now, you're, you're eliminating a house here and a house there, a few. And at first, I liked Alternative-C, but the way you described it just a minute ago, David, I think that most builders will just build- David, I think that most builders will just build the eight houses, single-family houses, because that's what they can sell, and they won't go through the trouble of doing extra design work and, you know, because they won't sell the two units that are on that one lot for substantially more necessarily than one big house. I just don't see that that's practical, that it'll happen very often. I'm not sure. But it seems like the incentive is not enough, that it will be occasionally, maybe, but probably not. They also will be very cautious not to build something that could detract in any way from maximizing the price that they can sell those other single-family homes for. So if you have, you know, I think we said eight, and one of those eight is a duplex, if that in any way can portray a lower price potential on the other seven, they'll never do it. So I'm not so convinced that I understand what the practical implications of all of this are. I sort of feel like, you know, anything above .5 is rounded up, and anything below .5 is rounded down. And in the practical application across the city in the next five years, that is going to amount to a few extra houses and a few not added houses, because they'll be below .5. I guess I'm trying to understand why it's different than that. It feels like there's a lot of noise in this that doesn't translate into a lot of outcome.
May I make a comment? I think, and I might be wrong, but I think there's a whole lot of old zoning of one-acre lots with one house on them. And right now, they're being snapped up and short-platted. And that extra one unit is a lot to somebody who buys one of those lots. And that's all over the place. That's common. We're 85% or 90% built out, so we don't have that many big subdivisions left. So that might answer part of your question. I'm concerned about these short plats.
And I guess part of the reason that it still seems to me that this is overly complicated is because in those instances, once you've taken out the critical areas and some of those other things, in some cases, it's going to be, you know, .62, and you round up, and in some cases, it's going to be .41, and you round down. And kind of overall, unless there's some manipulative strategy that would change that, maybe that I'm not seeing, in some cases, you get another one, in some cases, you won't, and on the average, it's kind of an average, right? Rounding down certainly limits any additional ever. I'm not sure for somebody who owns an acre or two, if that's necessarily the most reasonable, fair application of rules that maybe they didn't expect to have applied to their property. So I don't know. I'm trying to see where adding this complexity really affects anything substantively more than just doing a .5 and up, and a .499 and down. Is there something I'm not understanding about this?
For some people, this is a big deal. So I've heard both sides of it. Heard people in the middle, heard both sides of it on opposite ends. And for some communities where a subdivision goes in next door, and they realize that, oh, they got an extra unit out of that, it's something that is a major upsetter to people, for whatever reason. And maybe it's because they realize that behind their house, there would have been one house, and now there's two. Or there's change occurring. I, you know, I won't try and put words in their mouth or sentiment in their hearts, but it's a big deal for some people. I will say that from the staff perspective, that there is tension with the building community around, I want to say creativity, around how they get a little bit of extra land to tip them over the .5 level to get that extra unit. So we have seen creativity on the part of builders as to how they might achieve this. And my observation, strictly observation, is that, you know, we've seen projects, we have two projects side by side, they're both using points of bearing for the purpose of calculating their gross lot area, which is the origin of the calculation. So the surveyor comes in and uses a point of bearing based on benchmarks on one project, and they claim the line is in a certain place, which gets them just over .5. And then you have a different surveyor on a project next door that comes in and claims a point of bearing that gets them just over the .5. And then we end up being in a position where, hey, guys, your surveys don't match up. And we have to be the ones that are the arbitrator in, the arbiter, I guess, in settling the dispute over who owns that strip of land that they're both claiming that they own. And I have seen that exact scenario play out here. So for us, when you're dealing with a scenario where you might have a piece of land that is .49 or .51, it's, there's a lot of tension, because there is that make or break mentality with some builders around that extra few hundred thousand dollars that they get from that project. So, you know, in terms of administering this, it simplifies it by having them achieve a whole number. I'm saying that from the administration end of it.
And I think I've mentioned this before, but I still haven't grasped why that's different than, even if we say we're always rounding down, then instead of the lots that are, have a calculation that comes out to, let's use four, 4.51, then it just goes to a lot where the calculation, the same discussion happens for a lot that's 4.01 or 8.01, right? They're always going to, anybody that has a piece of property that's close to whatever line we pick, will do all exactly the same things to get over that line. And I don't know if there's a reason why .5 was, is different than an even number, or if we picked .7, if that would, because then anybody that's, whatever lot turns out to be close to that number, the builder will do the same thing. So I mean, if you say round down, well, then all the people that are .5, they can't do that. But all the people that are right around that .0, then they do.
Except that when you're dealing with a whole unit, if you're at 3.95, and, or, and you're dealing with, you're so much closer to the whole unit, it's when you're at that half unit that you're not near the whole. It's kind of like going to the store and saying, hey, I've got, I need to buy a gallon of milk, it's $3. I only have $2.51, can you just give me the milk? Versus going to the store and saying, hey, I've got, you know, $2.99, and it's $3, can you give me the milk? It's just, there's that much difference between the whole unit that's being achieved. And the perception on the part of many of the members of the public that I've heard from on this is that it's just something that there's a lot of sentiment around, that it's not right.
Just, thank you, Vice Chair Crandall. Just to quickly supplement the thoughts here, reflecting back on the council's conversation on this subject, the perceived problem from the city council perspective was the 1.13 acres turning into the five-unit short plot versus the four-unit short plot. The Chair Collins commented on this this afternoon, along the same vein that you're discussing here, but with a slight twist on it, which was actually somewhat consistent with the council discussion, supporting the Alternative C-1, with the caveat, though, that it would apply only in the instance of long subdivisions. So that'd be the nine lots and above. I totally get Commissioner Baughman's point. It's when you're talking about a 35-lot subdivision, what's the one additional lot? But when you're talking about a four-lot short plot, what is the one additional lot? You know, it's an extra 25%. So a little bit of a tough one to wrestle with. But anyway, I wanted to share the chair's comment from this afternoon. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. I just wanted to take a second, because we still have Commissioner member Brooks that would like to speak, but we don't have to be unanimous on this. And we've really had, you know, Mark kind of swayed me quite a bit to what you said, and I really appreciate it. So when we get into things like setbacks, they're going to affect the generality of this, the environment. So I guess what I'm saying is, remember, we don't have to be unanimous tonight. What we want to do is voice our opinion, and that's what I've heard so far. So, Mark, are you, can I turn it over to Eric?
Thank you, Larry. Thank you, staff, for the hard work. So I hear what Mark's saying, and I agree that whatever number you pick, someone's going to play games with that number to get over that number. So it's kind of a, I understand the nature of rounding up on short plats, and that that is, you know, can be a significant percentage of the overall project cost. But I do like, all that being said, if I have to make a choice, right, like we are often asked to do, I think that Alternative C, I'd like to expand a little on. I think that we could say that, you know, we could have construction of, you know, A, a townhouse or duplex, a small, single-family residence, maybe the preservation of an existing fixer-upper, all these things that are talking towards housing diversity. Whether or not they'll be utilized by the building community, I don't know if there's ways to, I like your idea about maybe half-unit counts when you're using, when you're trying to preserve some of these, maybe an old fixer-upper, you say, well, that's a half-unit, and maybe that doubles up with another half-unit that's left over, it becomes a whole unit. I don't really know, but I think there are some things that we could incentivize that to kind of deal with the forgotten middle housing, workforce housing, as some have called it. So I like Alternative C-1 modified.
Can I ask one other brief question from that conversation? So could we, as an alternative, say the rounding will be up or down, but based on a different point, so .7 or some number? So that, so that kind of addresses the, 1.13 would never be in an instance where it would round up. And the ones that are kind of questionable at 1.5 would not be rounded up. But the ones that are $2.95, that are most of the way there, could actually be rounded up? Is that even a possibility at this point in the process?
Yes.
If there's no other comments on this, would someone like to make a motion, Mark? Do you think you could put your, that caveat into the C-1? Or C.I.? It depends.
So are we, I'm just, I'm wrestling with a couple of different questions in my head right now. One is what exactly you're suggesting, and two is, are we actually going to, at this point in the process, move in second and vote? Or are we just, what's the process that you're asking us to do? Because, just because I know we have another more formal meeting where we...
There's two ways to go. My initial discussion with your chair tonight on this was that we would, we want definitive action. We want to know what we're proceeding with. There's two ways to do that. One is that you could make a vote on it. The other is that I could make a statement as to what I heard, and you could agree with that statement, or disagree with that statement.
So a motion in the example that you're considering currently, a motion would look something like, I moved to direct staff to prepare code language for the 17th of January that reflects item one, density rounding, Alternative C-1. That would be that straight up. If the commissioner wanted to put a slight twist on that, you would then state what the slight twist was.
Well, I mean, I can, sure. And I'm not sure that, how that'll be received. So I guess what, what I'm thinking about here is proposing C, is that one? C-1.
So, Mark, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, go ahead. I just need to think about this for a second and read the language.
So would you consider adding the language or the suggestions that were sent in the email, or which came after? David, can you go to the next? So something like this, or, so this is the graduated rounding. Would you like to add something like this in addition to one C? In some or the other form?
My, and I just read this about 10 minutes before I drove down here. My first look at this is, I'm not comfortable that I understand how it really would work. It seems to add more complexity to this, which already, I think, is too complicated. I also personally am concerned that the one to four unit, .9 is pretty tough, I guess. I would almost, I guess I would almost like to see, you know, the short plats maybe be set at .75, and the long plats be set at .5. And the incentive on C-1 is great. I don't think it'll provide much outcome, but it's fine to consider it and include it. So that way, I think that people that really feel that they've got a short plot, that they've been thinking they can develop, and it's pretty reasonable that it's, you know, .8 or something, I mean, they're going to, they're going to be able to get advantage of that and not feel like they were really treated poorly by the city. But those that have a, you know, a .2, well, they should have rounded down before, they should have never counted on that to begin with. So, yeah, so let's try this. And Jeff, I'm not going to get all the words that you suggested, but I'd move that the planning commission direct, direct staff to craft code language for density question one with alternative, utilizing Alternative C-1. And in addition, for short plats, the rounding point would be .7, and for long plats, the rounding point would be .5.
Is there a...
I second.
Yeah, if round up, if it's .7 or above, and round down if it's .69 and below, and similarly with the .5.
You've...
I heard the motion and the second.
You heard the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? If not, oh, wait a minute.
So is, when staff does this code, or this crafting, are you going to incorporate some of the other comments that were brought up about, you know, maybe expanding upon townhouse and duplex to include other things, maybe using partial, partial unit counts for additional incentivization of these types of housing choices?
Yeah, we can include some choices in the code drafting. So what we'll do is we'll come forward with the standard code section with some alternatives that you can choose from when we meet again on the 17th. And realize that when we meet on the 17th, we're preparing ourselves for a public hearing on the 31st.
Well, do we...
Is there any further discussion on the motion as, as stated?
I just want to support Eric's comment about the different, different units. That's more important to me than these numbers. So I really want to see that in there, even though it's not in the motion.
It's time to call for the vote. Those in favor signify by stating yes.
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 Those opposed, no. If not, the motion as stated in, will approve 6-0.
Thank you. The next item on the list is item number two, and this is regarding setbacks, and this is one of the more complex ones here. So once we get through this, the rest of the questions seem to be a little easier. And this one is particularly complex, although we did have a little brief conversation leading up to this. So the question, there are three questions presented here. And one thing to understand is that, as I pointed out before, is that the currently, the current structure of the code is that setbacks apply to structures. Structures are fairly broadly defined. You have the option of including, or changing how we do that here, to include a setback that might apply to a... to include a setback that might apply to a primary detached residence as outlined under item A dot 2 dot little a. Or you might also include a different setback that would apply to detached accessory dwelling units, which are already regulated by our code. And that might be like something that looks like item A dot 3. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. If you have questions for me, feel free to ask them.
Let's start with Commissioner Earl Farrell, please.
Can I, can I just before, just add a comment?
Certainly, sir.
Because I feel obligated. A2A, is that right? It was, was my suggestion. And when I did that, made that suggestion, it was not intended to make things difficult or cause chaos. It was really intended with the, and I just want to give the background. It was intended with the idea that I would, I would like to see, and I think it's reasonable to think about, reducing how restrictive we are on smaller homes and increasing the restrictions on larger homes, both in terms of scale, but also in terms of reasonableness for the neighborhood character. So you don't want to, in my mind, when I sat down at my computer and thought about this, you don't want a bunch of 5,000 and 6,000 square foot boxes that are all close together. You want greater distance. But if you have smaller homes being built, however unlikely that may seem at the moment, then it's probably reasonable that they could be closer together, so those setbacks could be smaller. Now, having listened to some of David's presentation tonight on how, in some cases, the parking or other things may actually dictate a lot of this anyway, I don't know whether this is meaningful or not. I can't tell for sure. And also the numbers, I just want to be very forthright in saying, the numbers came from here. They're not, there's no magic basis for any of that. It was just me thinking about the size of homes in my neighborhood, the size of the lots, you know, what kind of felt right. I was kind of hoping maybe there might be some feedback about that. So I just want to kind of do a little bit of full disclosure in saying, that's where that whole proposal came from. Right, wrong, indifferent. It was just a desire to scale things a little bit differently, rather than just have kind of a blunt tool that applies no matter what you build.
Okay, so when I think of setbacks, the first thing I think of, and it's down in figure four, about how the neighborhood that's being built, and when I, when I think of that, I think of large neighborhoods being put in. How that impacts the principal arterial, the minor arterial, and the collector arterial. Because I think a lot, a lot happens, and there's a lot of regulation around what happens inside the development, what the neighbors, what the people who live in that neighborhood experience. But there's also an experience of the person driving past that neighborhood, the person walking past that neighborhood. And I experience that on a daily basis, because I walk around this city quite a lot. And neighborhood development impacts the road upon which it's being built on. And I feel very strongly about the fact that we need to have setbacks from the road that it abuts onto, not only to protect the privacy of the people who are living in those homes, who, let's face it, right now are paying a lot of money for homes in Sammamish, but also that the person driving down the road and the person walking past is also, has, as, the character of their city is still intact, or at least is improved to some degree. So when I think of setbacks, that's the standpoint that I'm always thinking of, as opposed to standing in the middle of the development and looking to see the distance from the curb of, on the interior of the development to the, to the front door or from the back of their garden to the next garden. So I'm more interested about what the neighborhood, when it's fully built out, the impact it's going to have on the city, and then, and the neighborhood character of that particular part. So that's why I was really interested in that 25-feet setback from the property line that it abuts onto the street right away. And so I'm really in favor of that one. The other thing that I think of when I look at the setbacks, and it's on question three. Is that okay if I jump onto those questions? You know, should different setbacks be applied to detached accessory dwelling, dwelling units? What I just want to be sure of is that, because one thing that we heard when we did the focus groups, I think it was last summer, a lot of people were here, a lot of residents were here talking about that, that they would really like to build accessory dwelling units on their property as they're thinking of kind of retiring options, and that the regulations within the city are very complicated, and that they were asking to maybe make those regulations more simplified. So I would not like to put anything in that would add to and make that process more complicated for anyone who is looking at an accessory dwelling unit on their property. So if, if nothing, I will make sure that it's more simplified and an easier process. So those are just my thoughts when I, when I look at the, the setback situation.
Thank you, and I'll just be hopefully brief again. When David was showing those slides earlier, one thing came to mind that my input was, and I wrote it down, but I think I can remember it. The future, if, when we look at those setbacks, it seems like the larger setbacks would allow for additional dwelling units to be constructed on our property. Is, is that a right assumption? Other words, if we wanted to build a little, small father-in-law, mother-in-law cabin, the more pervious surface would allow for that?
It would wholly depend on the lot size, yeah. But generally speaking, if there's more space left available on a property and the lot is large enough, then that would definitely facilitate the later construction of a detached accessory dwelling unit.
Thank you.
So like you said, this is, I think, a very complex issue. I think, given our housing strategy and also, you know, considering that many seniors in our community want to live here, and also the necessity for workforce housing, I think, you know, we should make it easier for people to build ADUs instead of restricting their ability to have those kind of units. So, and I, I don't know, so if, adding the same setbacks that we have for a single-family homes, if we apply to that, I think it would be impossible to build them. So I would probably not encourage that. I think the, there are some other questions that I have around setbacks, as in, you know, Sammamish has a very different topography, you know, it's not all flat. And I would like to see how these setbacks affect something that's maybe on a hill versus, you know, something that's right at the water. And, and I would really want to understand that a little bit more before I, you know, go ahead with picking my answer or the choice. And then also, I think, in your previous presentation, when you responded to one of the questions that Mark asked, I think the, the character that we seem to be wanting to have in Sammamish, you know, not having houses that are too close, you know, big houses, I think that seemed to be, that the dial that moved it to be more open seemed to be the parking rather than the setback. So I would like to understand that as well. It's like, how much are these setbacks really going to help us with, you know, sort of keeping the character that we want to keep in our city, which is, you know, not, not just huge houses on, on smaller lots, that, that kind of thing, which I think is bothering a lot of people in Sammamish. So actually, I have more questions than I have answers for this one. Thank you.
So first I would say that I am definitely in favor of, what is that? It's the ADU, number three under A, maybe it is? Allowing the ADUs, because if we're going to apply, if we're going to apply these setbacks, generally speaking, we should allow for, I think, ADUs to be able to be built in a different set of criteria than, than the setbacks. So I'm definitely in favor of that. I think we could consider saying ADUs limited to, limited to a certain height or one floor or something. So somebody's not trying to build an ADU, even, I, I can't imagine that, but a 500-square-foot one that's two floors is really not what we're looking for. I also am in favor of the, the following one, along the arterials. I do think maybe the language should be just tweaked, instead of just saying the street right away, saying the arterial right away, because there may be instances where a house is on an arterial on one side and on their neighborhood street on the other, and I think we've kind of determined that the objective is a little different in those two instances. Next, I guess my question for you, David, is, is any of this stuff with the variability and the setbacks even make any sense, or is it far afield and was a waste of time? Is there, is there anything there at all? And I'm kind of asking because, you know, I, I guess I'm looking for your expertise and experience in this kind of planning. Is, is this useless complication that will never really result in anything anyway, or? And in particular, you know, the, the one that I really, I tried to put in here, also the suggestion that in some instances, when you have a lot that's a little bit of an odd shape, and you have one corner that violates that, that number by a couple feet, I think it's, maybe that exception works out, it works itself out in the permitting process elsewhere, and then I'm totally fine with that. But I think, you know, forcing that lot to become a different utilization because of a piece of land that might be this big is really not the objective we're getting at. So, I don't know, is any of this even, even a worthwhile discussion or not?
So-
And, and don't worry, you won't hurt my feelings if you tell me that was a waste of time.
So I appreciate the response to A2, or A2, B1 and 2. Or excuse me, A3 and A4. And thank you for the clarification on those. Regarding A2A, there, there is some logic in what you're presenting here. With regard to implementation, the average item becomes a little more complex, because then how do you average it? How do you report that? Who checks it? Then you end up in debates with architects around, does it meet the setback or not? You know, how are they averaging it? We'd have to create directors' interpretations, you know, administrative standards on how those are, are done, which we could do. But with regard to pushing builders to make decisions around including diverse housing types, I think when they are presented with, now, now, of course, the market is a really big driver, right? But if the market changes over time, you might see that what you're looking at here would present multiple different types of housing choices within one division. So you might see an area where you don't have a exactly rectangular or square parcel, where they could take advantage of some of the geometry in one end of the lot and include smaller buildings and smaller lots. And on the, the geometry of the other end of the lot where it's larger, they would include larger lots and larger buildings. It's, it's something that would drive up the requirement for the amount of land necessary to build a larger home, which is also consistent with the direction that we received for setbacks from the city council with regard to the interim regs. So when we turn the dial up on the setbacks, it required more land for a larger home. So in this case, though, what you're saying, and you're kind of promoting to some degree a smaller home, because you're saying, hey, a smaller home could fit in more harmony next to another smaller home. Basically is what I'm hearing here. So it, it depends. It's, it's a something, you know, I, you know, the, the numbers, again, they're, they're dials. You can turn them. But the concept is really the question, I think, that we're asking the commission right now. And if you all feel that this is something that you'd want to see, more of a dynamic, responsive setback tool that we have in the code, as opposed to more of just a, a straight setback that applies to single-family homes than they are for, right? There's, there's, there's different ways to do it. So in this case, what you would do is you would be applying a standard setback to all structures, but for single-family detached primary residences, you would be applying A2A. And for accessory dwelling units, you would be applying A3. And that would make up your, your setback structures here, the, the structure of setback regulations in our code. And we could then focus on what the appropriate setback is for standard structures, and maybe you turn the dial down on that. Because now you are addressing the issue, which is the larger buildings, then someone could locate a shed closer to their property line, for example. So I think the first question you might want to ask yourselves is, is that the structure that you want to see move forward? Is that, is that the type of code that you want to see move forward? Or would you rather have a code that has one standard structure setback that applies to all structures? That's the first question. Then the second question is, what are the dimensions that would apply to standard structures, primary, single-family residences, and accessory dwell, detached accessory dwelling units? So.
Yeah, and I, I think that when people talk about the character of older neighborhoods, that is, one thing you see more of is, you know, a two-story house, and another two-story house, and then a one-story house. And some of them have larger yards, and some of them have smaller yards, and there's more variety. So if that, if there's potential for this to encourage that to occur in some instances, I mean, it sort of feels like it creates more diversity that we have been desiring, or the potential for that, but also gives someone developing their property potentially the opportunity to use it more to its maximum potential, right? So, I mean, I've always thought the idea that we're not obligated to, I don't think that we're obligated to guarantee that, that everybody can build four each 5,000-square-foot houses on, on their property. That might be four each 2,500-square-foot houses, and that might be the best choice. So in this instance, if that, if they can utilize the land as they're building a short plat by putting a couple smaller homes in that may provide better value for them than trying to shove in a bunch of larger homes, that's, I mean, you kind of confirmed, maybe not the averages stuff, I understand the complexity of that, but the variability based on the, the structure, the house size, I still think that that's got some viability to creating potentially a good outcome, at least in some instances.
All right. Well, I'll just run through your questions quickly here. Question number one, I think, yes, we need to have these different setbacks defined. I think that's good. Number two, should it be changed to respond to home size? Yeah, I think that there's some, I think there's some benefit there of, like Mark said, having that kind of more dynamic thing. I think dynamic regulation leads to more dynamic outcome, which is what everyone is looking for, less homogeneity. The detached accessory dwelling units, my experience, for example, in Seattle, setbacks there for the main residence is 20-foot front, 20-foot or 20% of lot depths for the rear, five on the side. But for a day do or detached accessory dwelling unit, they're reduced to five foot. The, the side setback is the same at five foot, but the rear yard is, is reduced to five. But there's an additional restriction on it in that the base height for the structure is 12 feet, and you can go up to 16 feet with certain roof forms. So, right out of the gate, you're restricted to how high you can make the building. When you can get it closer to the property line, but it's got to be lower. So that's kind of, I think, how they're, they're managing this kind of imposition on your neighbor to a degree while balancing extra density. So I think we should look at that a little bit. If it, if it's not already in the day do code, maybe there already is aspects that control heights and things like that in there. So on, on A2, I think that those have some, some, I'd like to see that being, be developed a little bit more. I think that the averaging, I, I see like a backyard where it's going like this, and averaging kind of doing this, and I see you getting actually in a point where the average could meet the regulation, but you might end up driving the house to start getting closer than 10-foot for other fire protective reasons and things like that. And if you do have an angled backyard, you actually, it would actually end up making the house maybe do some of this, which gets more variability that we're looking for, potentially. I think that it's important to define what we're, what we're trying to promote with these setbacks.
setbacks, too. I think that overarching reason why we're doing these setbacks is an important thing to kind of establish in the code, you know, whether it's for daylight access or bulk management or whatever. I think that having those overarching reasons for why we're doing these things helps, I mean, it helps me as a designer, too, when I see, okay, well, this is what you're trying to do, and there might be another three alternatives that allow us to do that that aren't in the code, but they still get us where we want to go. I think that allows for more creativity. I'm also interested in seeing how the daylight plane would interact with, with this, too, because the daylight plane seems to me that it, it, it could achieve some of these, this variability that we're looking for, for home sizes, too, perhaps. The question about certain building elements being allowed to protrude, I think that that's pretty standard, too. Bay windows and chimneys, and there's certain limitations. You can, you know, it's limited to maybe two-foot of encroachment and within, and eight-foot of linear foot along any one facade. So there's a little bit of kind of pushing and pulling and stuff, which I think is, is nice for variability. We talked about the ADU. In the, the, we might want to consider whether we want ADUs in the front yard. When we start talking about, you know, street setbacks, it kind of lets me, makes me think that maybe we're allowing them in the front yard, which we may or may not want to, to do that. And then the arterial setbacks, I think that that's important, and I, I would encourage considering other public spaces like trails and parks, besides just, you know, major streets. For example, along the, the Lake Trail, you know, you can have some very imposing structures on that as, as well. So that's, that's, that's all my comments.
I feel that the changes aren't enough to improve the character, which is why I would consider it, consider changing the setbacks at all. So, I'm kind of for sticking to the same thing, especially before we adopt the housing strategy. I don't know why, when we adopt the housing strategy, then maybe some of these new setbacks would make more sense to me. I'm kind of with Mark, like Mark was on the, saying, what do you get out of it? And I'm, I'm thinking the same thing. What are we going to get out of it? I just don't see, see that it's enough. I'm definitely, if we're going to reduce the setbacks for ADUs in the rear yards, they have to be one-story. The privacy back there would be obliterated if we allow to. Then my biggest thing is the principal arterials, 228th, the Pine Lake Road, and even southeast, is it 43rd? I want to see 50-foot setbacks. And for one reason, I'm thinking of the size of, of a site that would create a healthy environment for a forest, for a forest condition, forest trees, that we've talked about wanting along arterials. And we want 100% canopy. We've talked about that that would be such a neat thing to have. It would protect the private houses and the private property, and it would create a wonderful driving experience through some mammoth. So, as, when I see these little boxes come up right, like they're on the sidewalk practically of those streets, I'm just devastated. And so, of everything in here, in this section on setbacks, I just really want to see that nice big fat, what was that? Did you hear that?
It was Jeff sneezing.
It's me sneezing.
Gosh, you scared me. I want to see that nice big setback. Did you do that on purpose?
No.
Along arterials. There.
Thank you, Jane. Does anybody else want to chime in on this?
I, I think just one comment that I want to make is that, like, you know, like Jane and Mark have said, what are we getting out of this? I think the other thing we should all be looking at is, these are regulations that will be carried on by, by developments 10, 15 years down the road, right? It's, so this is not for now. This is not going to change anything right now. But these, these regulations are going to be reflected 10, 15 years down the road. And I think that is the vision we all should be having. And I think it's, it's hard to kind of envision what kind of developments might come or be redone, and to see how these, these regulations will be implemented for those future developments.
If, if I could add one comment, too, in response, in response to that and some of the other comments that I heard, is that, you know, the, these would be the prescriptive regulations that the city has, that would apply to any project that is coming in the door. Now, if we were to down the road add a planning and development code section, or a cottage housing code section, which would be fairly easy additions, just create new sections, you could actually create some flexibility. Most PUD codes, planning and development codes, include something along the lines of a 20% reduction of setbacks, some additional things that you can do that are design modifications, when you also provide diverse cho, houses, diverse, diverse choices of housing, when you provide additional landscaping, all those types of things. So in this case, if you had a, a set of standards that you felt, on balance, for prescriptive standards, were restrictive enough, but also still allowed development to proceed and get enough of an outcome that you're looking for, you could provide quite a bit of flexibility down the line and, and through incentives in planning and developments and in cottage housing to get a, a different outcome. And that, that might be where you would focus on trying to achieve some of these other things that you're talking about. So if the, if the rule is set at a standard that is at the right place, it would actually, you might actually see some projects choose to use a planning and development type code, because it would be something where they would actually be able to get the outcome they're looking for in terms of their development. So it's something to think about is, where do you want to set the dial on this? I think this is one of the, the most important ones with regard to setting the dial, so to speak, the right level of regulation through prescriptive rules.
I was trying to come up with a motion, and the best I could come up with was that, well, I was getting ready to do that, but I wanted, before extending the meeting, or ask for extension, to give you the idea. I wonder if we could direct staff to come up with what we have in front of us as restrictive, but somewhere in there put what David just said on the flexibility in the future for this. But I can't come up with it in my mind. This is tough. So that's something to think about. Now, the time indicates that we need a motion to extend the meeting. We had before us, oh, excuse me, go ahead, I was reading ahead. No, I was going to, yes, that's-
I move that we extend the meeting till 9:00?
Is there a second?
Second.
We have before us a motion to extend tonight's meeting until 9:00 PM. Those in favor of extension signify approval, approval by stating yes.
Yes.
Those approved, no. Would you like a five-minute recess? Oh, the motion passes 6 to 0. Please have the minutes indicate that, to extend the meeting till 9:00 PM. Would you like a five-minute break now, or not?
I tried to craft a motion for this one that we could consider, and then maybe close this section and have a-
That sounds great. I'm going to turn, turn my mic off and-
I'll give this a shot, anyway. I would move that we direct staff to craft, propose code language under the, the section of setbacks in accordance with item A2A, but with simplified language-removing averages, with evaluation of the numbers based on their expertise and experience, and in consideration of other structures that are not listed in there. So providing some variability. And further, in accord, to, to do the same in accordance with item A.3, the ADU five-foot language, with the additional restriction that it, that the, this applies when you're using single occupied level ADUs. And further, for item A.4, along arterials, with a minor language clarification that it is applied on the arterial side, not on the neighborhood street side. And I think that covers the things we discussed for this item.
Is there a second to the motion as stated?
Second.
Before us, there's a motion concerning setbacks. Is there any, just, more discussion?
I just have a clarifying question. So, for A4, are we saying we require a minimum of 25 feet? Is, are we sticking to the 25 feet, or are we waiting for staff to come up with another suggestion? Or go with Jane's 50-foot suggestion?
I like 50 feet, I have to say.
My perception of all of these is that the numbers are still probably the, to be discussed later, particularly if staff thinks that some number that we've suggested or proposed doesn't work for some reason, or would be a violation of other parts of the code, whatever. But what we're doing is setting what we're going to do, and then the next round should be, from what I think David described, what the numbers will be that get applied to those actions. So, right now, it's 25 feet. We may have more discussion and change that to be 22 and 1/2 feet, or 38 and 1/2.
And we might find that if we decide to go with daylight plane, that the combination of the two might result in desired outcome without increasing setback, perhaps, to-
Any other-
You understanding, David and Jeff? Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the question. Those in favor of the motion as, as stated, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion is to direct staff, et cetera, et cetera, as affirm 6 to 0. At this time, we'll, the chair will make a decision to take a five-minute break, recess. And do remember, we are extending the meeting till 9:00.
Okay. They got to the same place. They got to the same place. It's just.
Mark, how are you able to do that? I couldn't.
Mark?
How are you able to do that? I couldn't.
Mark?
How are you able to do that? I couldn't.
Mark?
At the building permit level, the decision on the city is the decision to issue a permit. The permit is only appealable through the Land Use Petition Act process to Superior Court. So a neighbor that might be dissatisfied with a decision to allow for an adjustment of setback, their only recourse would be to file a LUPA appeal versus a variance where a neighbor is dissatisfied with the city's decision to grant an adjustment of setback through the variance process could file a local appeal to the city's hearing examiner.
I'll just jump in quickly to reflect the chair's comments from earlier today. Similar perhaps to the vice chair, Crandall, the Chair Collins was not in favor of moving forward with this, so I guess option B, which would be to not do anything. She would be much more eloquent than I in describing the reasons why, but I think in summary, she was not necessarily in favor of adding more process onto or building more process into our codes in this particular manner. So I think it's fair to say she clearly understood the need for this idea, but trying to build in additional process like neighborhood notification, neighborhood endorsement, she wasn't in favor of, but realizes those are important elements as well in doing something like this. So as of today, her position was B on this.
Because this seems to be trying to merge the variance process with the adjustment of setbacks.
Yes, and other jurisdictions do have a process where if you get an endorsement from your neighbor, that you could actually adjust the setback along that property line. And then what happens is you have an agreement between the neighbors that's recorded on the title of the property. So basically, your neighbor's agreeing that, hey, this is not impacting me, I'm fine with it. Any subsequent sale of that home, either home, there's an agreement that's recorded that rides with the title. So then any subsequent buyers would be aware of that agreement. So other cities have criteria-driven, ministerial-level adjustment of setbacks, but they do require neighbor endorsement. So that's one way to get around a disruption to a neighbor. So that's an alternative. That's why we included that there.
Thanks.
I'll be the contrarian once again. I perceive this, I'm actually, I feel like I'm in favor of it because I perceive that it makes a process more accessible to people that want to pursue it, rather than having to go in front of a hearing examiner, potentially go legal. This is maybe a simpler process. And I understand the negative of forcing staff to make a decision, but I would hope that the outcome of that decision is probably, in 90-plus percent of the cases, the same, whether it's a hearing examiner, or a permit reviewer, or whoever with the staff. So if the outcome is the same, but it creates a situation that's more accessible to people to get through it without spending a lot of money, or a bunch of time, or setting up scheduled hearings and so forth, then as long as the requirement is in there that the request or the applicant, whoever, has to obtain neighbor endorsement, to me, that's the critical piece here, that the neighbor agrees to it, then I guess I feel like that's kind of a reasonable way to simplify the process, although it does put the burden on a different level of person within the staff. I guess one other question I have is, what if the setback is not to a neighbor? What if it's a front yard setback, or a backyard to a road, or how does that, does that apply here? How does that work?
Yeah, so there would not be an adjustment of the front setback, so any of the others may include a neighbor. So in this case, if you were including a neighbor endorsement, it would require that. Otherwise, they may just go through a variance process, right? The off-ramp or the relief valve, as I previously described, so think about this in terms of, what is the alternative, right? What is the next step they could go to? As long as there's a next step, we're okay, because in those limited instances where you might come across that, where, oh, there's a park next door, or there's King County Trail next door, well, then you could apply for a variance. And that's a process that has a legal path. And what might happen is if you chose option A, 1, B, that we were to continue with a ministerial adjustment with the neighbor endorsement, if a neighbor didn't get along with their neighbor, which we do have quite a bit of that, I've seen that regularly here in other cities where I've worked as well, then the person who's proposing the new construction or the building could apply for a variance.
Right, but they can't use this process.
But they wouldn't be able to use that process. And then that gives the neighbor who disagrees with them the ability to appeal any city decision, and it sets it on course for a hearing examiner deciding, and maybe a court at a later date.
Right. I also was curious where the 50% number came from.
Again, it's kind of like the numbers you threw out. It's a question of what's appropriate as a starting point.
I think if I was going to support this, I would probably dial that down to something less, 25, 30%, maybe.
So the criteria does speak to it being the minimum necessary. You know, again, it's a slightly arbitrary decision-making point, but it does speak to that, and we do have the ability to push back to the applicant. But dialing it back is definitely something we can do.
I guess, is my other question? Can't think of it.
So I do appreciate having a way for neighbors to get along and kind of solve a problem without a bunch of expenditures on attorneys and things. It does concern me that if, in the one case, you have to go through a Superior Court, that there's no lower-level way to push back on it. So from the other side of the coin, I think we want to make sure that it's easier for the applicant, but it's also easier for someone that's not happy with the application to push back. Neighbor notification, neighbor endorsement, there's been instances where one neighbor wanted a build closer to the property line, so they got an easement from the other neighbor. They were further away from the property line, so the net distance between the houses was still the 10 feet for the fire protection thing, but one was closer than the other. As you said, that was an easement recorded with the land, and so that would be known by anyone in the future. If we don't have this ministerial, and go back to B, I would even, can we make adjustments to the old system, the old, the existing code? Can we have limitations on how much reduction is done there, from administrative reductions of setbacks? One thing that I notice along the lake, for example, along the trail, oftentimes these setbacks are dialed way back to zero in some cases for different reasons, but I wonder how much criteria and kind of staff on the boots-on-the-ground investigation is done prior to some of those types of, because the neighbor, they built a big house, so I get to build a big house. Well, it's not always 100% true. It's not every neighbor has a big house. It's only one neighbor has a bigger house, and the other neighbors have smaller houses. But just kind of curious a little bit about how that does, because when we read at a higher-level code language, it reads as if there's this compatibility, and this bulk, and scale, and all these kind of things, but when we see things getting built up, it doesn't necessarily convey that same, you know, it seems like it's out of scale, it's too bulky, it's too this, it's too that. And so a lot of times, the public is left with wondering, what does the code really mean? I read this, and I understand it to mean this, but it's not coming out of the ground like this. So are we able to, if we say no, are we able to make modifications to what the existing code is, or the existing procedure is?
Before David answers that question, I'd like to just, Commissioner Brooks, I'd like to clarify just one thing that you mentioned in your statement there. In relation to houses on the lakes, there are three lakes, so you may have been referring to Sammamish specifically, but this applies to all three lakes. In areas where shoreline regulations apply, those contained in Title 25, which are specifically for lots along the lake or within close vicinity within the shoreline regulatory zone area, those are required to go through a shoreline variance process, which in our case here in Sammamish, requires a public hearing before the city's hearing examiner. And then the decision of the hearing examiner is actually sent to the State Department of Ecology for final approval. Those applications, we haven't had any necessarily in recent memory, being 2018, but certainly we have had a solid handful of those types of applications in my time here at the city. Those typically have a fair amount of analysis that go into them, can often get very contentious in front of the hearing examiner, and as they make their way up to the Department of Ecology. So in those specific examples, those are covered under a very different process than this. And with that, because I know he's forgot the question by now, I'll let David answer the question that he asked.
While David is thinking about the question, again, the time indicates that we need a motion to extend.
I move to extend the meeting to 9:30.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting till 9:30. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye or yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes 6 to 0 to extend the meeting to 9:30 PM. David, go ahead.
So the question was whether or not if we selected item A, or excuse me, B1, whether or not we could actually adjust the rules that were in place prior to the interim regs being passed. We can do that. Again, not to my awareness, really ever seen those rules be used prior to the passing of the interim regs, but if there's concern about that. Now, realize that the rules prior to the interim regs didn't allow that much flexibility. I think it was 15% setback adjustment is what it allowed when you met a certain criteria. But I could take a look at those and bring that back. If you want me to package a partner amendment to the code with whatever you choose for this item, be happy to bring that back to you.
Jane?
I'm for A, B, neighborhood endorsement. Number two, B, I would like to say others should be negotiation and agreement. I like the idea of the neighbors negotiating and understanding and trading off, perhaps, with odd-lot situations. I don't like B, I think it puts too much of a burden on staff.
Clarifying question, would you support a minimum, like a minimum of five feet or something like that, that you would not be able to go below, under your proposal for item A to B, the other numbers? If it was negotiated between the neighbors, we wouldn't want to, for example, let them do like a zero lot line scenario.
I almost don't care. I think that fits our strategy, and I like that. I like the interest that it creates. Right now, we have a very mundane, strict code, and I like the idea of it.
So there.
In the interest of brevity, I agree with Jane. I like the idea of neighborhood endorsement and neighbors, I like the idea of a homeowner being able to do as they want, if they want to put an addition onto their home, but I do think it impacts your neighbor, and there should be some sort of discussion between your neighbor as to what you're going to do, and that the neighbor should have a say in what they're going to have to look at. So I agree, I say yes to A, 1B, and 2B.
Would you like to make that in form of a motion?
Thanks, Larry. I move that, okay, I need help with putting a motion together.
We're going to direct staff to...
So I'd like to direct staff to propose code language on adjustments of setbacks. Should the code include provision for criteria-based administrative adjustment to setbacks? Yes. Yes for A1 and 2B. Is that correct? So A1B, 2B.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
Should we set some number, or should we leave it? I had thrown a number out, but then you gave a different number. I don't know if we should even do that or not. When it says some other number, I guess maybe the one thing I'd say is some lower number than 50%.
So per Commissioner Garrison, it was subject to neighbor negotiation. We could figure out a way to set that. My recommendation and what I would bring back is an option, and what I will bring back is an option to have a minimum standard included, because it could get tricky. I mean, I understand the full flexibility, but there are issues, other issues that are presented when you end up with zero lot line.
Okay.
Code, as currently constructed in the code in relation to what we have, it does provide an adjustment of setback by up to 30% is what's in the code currently.
I just need a clarification. So are we just suggesting 1A, or 1A and B? So is it just neighborhood notification, but not neighborhood endorsement?
I think she said 1B and 2B.
So then neighborhood notification?
So 1B.
Neighborhood endorsement.
Neighborhood endorsement, and then number two, that's next, B, the other.
How would the neighborhood notification work with this?
We wouldn't be doing it, because if you think about it, the only person that would be affected by it is the neighbor on the side where the setback that you're adjusting is located. So if you're actually getting endorsement from that neighbor, then you're by default notifying them.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
One more quick question. So we talked one time, not too long ago, about, David, you and I, about setbacks in relation to what's required on the subdivision, right? And so are we running into any issues with neighbors thinking they're going to be able to adjust a setback, but it's not allowed to be adjusted by some other regulation?
So with a subdivision, the builder might be given two options. One is if they negotiated with their neighbor, they could reduce the setback down to potentially a minimum. Or option two is that they could propose it through the administrative adjustment of setbacks as part of the subdivision process itself.
And I guess I'm thinking more about an existing subdivision, existing lots, and two neighbors, 20 years from now, wanting to do something between their lot line. That's the scenario that I'm thinking about.
They could, for example, say, you own Lot A, and your neighbor owns Lot B. Those were subdivided in 1990. There were rules that applied in 1990. Now they are the rules that we have passed, that you're currently being subjected to. And you want to build something that's closer to the lot line than what the code setback allows, you would go ahead and talk to your neighbor about it. They would sign an agreement that you would record to the title of the property, and then we would adjust the setback down to that in accordance with what the code allows.
But if the subdivision was five years ago, then that may not play out that way, because the setbacks defined by the subdivision would still be...
You're still vested to that older standard.
Right.
Yeah, I think, you know, but the likelihood that we see someone who bought one of these homes, usually you're only subject to those rules for a couple more years after you buy the house, sometimes even one year, and it's done. And in those cases, once you've exceeded the vesting limitation of RCW 5817.170, you would revert back to whatever the current code is in place.
Any other discussion? If not, call for the question. Those in favor signify by stating yes.
Yes.
Yes. And those opposed, no. A great amendment, I mean, a motion appreciated, and I hope, we should give a shout-out to Anthony, who has got to record all this and get it right. So, yes. Okay, it's, we're going to number four.
Yep, so the question for number four is, should the city's development regulations measure building height from average existing grade?
I'll keep my answer short and respond as yes. I think the questions that I'm sure will come later on is, you know, when we start talking about grading and that, and how will that affect the building height? Also, I think we mentioned before, we are seeing more homes, I don't think we mentioned it, it was in public comment, that we are seeing more homes with like three stories, and I think that will certainly be affected by this regulation, but I think it certainly will help with what we have in the city and not just stand out. So I would support having a building height that is measured from the existing natural grade.
I believe this is an example that reflects more how building was done prior years, and which is what I appreciate more, so I'm in favor.
Yes, I support this as well, and I think that for many of the same reasons, I think it helps to preserve existing neighborhood character better.
Why is nobody, I see, okay. I support measuring from existing grade. That's all.
Yes, for A1.
Chair agrees.
Is this my turn to make a motion?
Yes. It's coming.
Okay, so the planning commission would like to, no, yeah, yeah. Planning commission would like to instruct the staff to propose code language to include building height to be measured from the average existing natural grade before a project starts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? If not, the chair calls the question. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, say no. The motion, again, unanimously passes 6 to... Now, we're going to number...
Five.
Five, yes.
So the one question I had about this was where the 40-foot number came from. I was just trying to think through, you know, the typical residential floor-to-floor heights, and is there some basis for 40 feet? Is that based on anything in particular, or?
Yeah, so admittedly, this is lifted from another city's code directly, and I was participating in that code update as well. And the rationale for that was that the building height, as it was measured, oftentimes allowed for a fourth floor to be built. So if you're on a slope, for example, and you have a daylight basement, a second floor, a third floor, that oftentimes they would try and squeeze in an attic floor. And what the resultant problem was, is that the wall was flat, and the height of 40 feet seemed to be the height where people were feeling like there was a looming giant next to them. So it was responding to those homes that are built on a slope, generally. So if you're down slope of a building, and the corresponding wall is about 40 feet, it seems very large, because your building usually is five feet lower than that even, where its foundation starts. So the idea there, you could change the number. You can change it to 50 feet, you can change it to 35 feet, but it's measured from the foundation, where the dirt hits the foundation to the ridge of the roof.
So I guess, generally, I'm very much in favor of this. I think that maybe some of the other things that we're talking about may actually be greater limiting factors than this, in some cases, anyway. I do feel like the 40-foot number feels too large as a general application. If you had a specific instance like that, yes, maybe, I could see where that would, I don't know, I'm just trying to figure out, it feels like the number's too big to me.
So we do allow for 35-foot building height currently. We do base that on average grade, so if you were using the average existing grade model, and you were building on a slope, you could very easily get to 40 feet of facade. So that's sort of the, you could go even higher than that.
I guess, part of it is, I think that when I look at what we're seeing built right now, it's probably not 40 feet, and I don't think it's appropriate, as is. Well, if it's 35, it must be 35, is probably what it is, and I don't really think most people in Sammamish think it's appropriate either. But I also want to be cautious about applying something blunt like this, that then somebody building on a hill all of a sudden is faced with a bunch of challenges, because, you know, they're building on a hill for the view, or for whatever reason. So I'm in favor of this, but I think 40 feet makes me a little uncomfortable.
So realize that if you were to put 35 feet in there, that you're not necessarily limiting someone to 35 feet, it's just that that segment of wall that they're exposed to cannot be taller than 35 feet without the implementation of other architectural relief elements.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, is this on any facade?
Yes, so this would be for single-family residents.
On any facade, front, side, back?
On any facade, yes.
On any facade, okay.
How about duplexes and townhouses? It would also apply to that.
It would. You could accept those. Those are very simple to accept. This does not apply to duplexes and townhomes.
Well, yeah, the question's more driven about having duplexes and townhomes mixed in with single-family, and having differing regulations, it might be confusing. Is, in the existing regulation, is there roof pitch bonuses? I think that it's 35 feet, but it doesn't recognize the roof form, and in many jurisdictions, if you have gabled roof forms, the maximum height might be to the center of that pitch, and if you have a flat roof, then the maximum height's to the top of that flat roof. So you get a little, some variation, you get to get higher up if you have a pitched roof, in some ways, if you're looking at the gable, it's not as imposing as if you're looking at the front, but there's some recognition that a pitched roof, because it tapers away from the facade, is a little less imposing. So do we have that aspect of our code currently with our...
It's not, it's more simply written than that. And really, what it's looking for is that if you're building a large wall, that you're thinking about how you're building it and designing it, and that you're not just going to build a large, flat wall, which is, so this is most commonly going to be a problem where someone has maximized the setbacks, and they're pushing a really large, tall wall right up against the setback, and they haven't included any architectural relief, because there's no place to include it, because they're maximizing the setback. So what this is doing is it's saying, hey, if you're going to be trying to push that wall up to the maximum, you need to think about how to find that extra space to include some of those architectural elements that make it not just a big, flat wall.
Right, well, and the feeling of a 35-foot box versus a 35-foot to the peak of a pitched roof is much different, so we may want to consider changing things up there a little bit, but I think the daylight plane, if that's enacted, would also help to drive some of this modulation to, and might limit some of these big expansive facades.
It gets very complex when you end up dealing with topography, and you have to deal with the daylight plane, and you also have to deal with the facade. When you have sloping property lines, and you're trying to apply these things to those, so that's where we get into a difficult implementation.
Right. I will say, though, that more complicated restrictions oftentimes lead to more creative and interesting design outcomes, so keep that in mind.
It's Jane's turn. I've never... I'm used to the 35-foot number, and 40 is shocking to me when I read this. And I... Because it's isolated, and it's this, and the way we're reading it, and it isn't connected to any other code conditions, maybe if I saw it in the code and where it occurred, if it occurred under daylight basements, or something like that, I could accept it, but the way it is right now, it's very hard for me to take. I see it... I almost see a 40-foot-high wall, even, what are you going to do to that, to, if you stepped it enough, maybe, but without calling out the architectural features, I guess I can't accept the 40 feet. So then, if we say no, building facade height will be unrestricted, is that, does that mean 40 feet will be...
Maybe Jeff can reply here.
A suggestion, actually, to perhaps help Commissioner Garance and the rest of you. It sounds like you're interested, for the most part, in regulating this in some form or fashion. Why don't we do this, if the commission is so inclined? We'll write the code up, we'll construct the code and bring that back on the 17th, but for your benefit, we'll also, we'll mock up something visually that you can look at, that might help wrapping your heads around the 40 feet. And remember, David says the 40 foot's a dial, right? You can dial it up, dial it down, but we'll draft it at the 40, we'll prepare something visual for you to take a look at, and then you can have, perhaps, wrap your head around it, have a discussion about it on the 17th, looking at it in code form with some visuals.
That'd be great, and in fact, some, maybe some examples of what architectural modulation and features, what they are.
And in the interim regs, that ordinance 471, there are a list of those items, yeah. So we'll re-highlight those for you on the 17th as well.
It sounded like Jeff said that they were going to do that. Do you still want us to do a motion for the record?
You make a motion, maybe saying, what Jeff said you're asking us to do.
I move what Jeff said.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Now we're moving on to number six.
So this one is mask grading. The question here is, should the city's development regulations restrict mask grading to limit modifications and alteration to the existing grade of a project site?
So I start off here, I say yes, it should be regulated.
Any other discussion?
I have discussion.
Jane?
We, this is really more important than it appears. It's not just... It is protecting the environment, which we all want, and we're all, we all hate what we see when we see mask grading. But what they're getting out of it is that it's keeping housing costs down a little bit. It's making it more affordable, and it drives it to the ends of the earth. It drives it way up if we don't allow mask grading. And I'm not sure how much land is left that would need to be mask graded. Maybe there isn't enough to worry about, but if we take away mask grading, could we give something back? Could we give back maybe units, or more dwelling units, maybe apartments, maybe attached units, something that makes up for it, so that we're not just driving the costs way up? I think that the... I worry about the environment, and I also don't like the character in the community after the mask grading is completed. That isn't good either, so I think we need to do a trade-off here. I don't think we can just say, no mask grading. I don't think that fits with our housing strategy.
Anyone else?
I agree, A1.
Chair feels that way.
A1 as well.
A couple comments. One is that I think, my perception, based on my background, is that the, what's been portrayed by certain people, both in public comment and elsewhere, about the cost associated with this, is, in my opinion only, overly exaggerated. I don't think, when you look at some of the examples, it's difficult for me to believe that it's not, in fact, more expensive for them to do what they're doing than it would be to try to work with the existing grade. I just, and I speak from some experience in this, so I am struggling with the idea that it will drive housing prices up, because they're going to sell these houses for as much as they can, anyway, and whether they're all up on a big, a big, flat hill, or set in the hillside, they're going to sell them for the same price. The only difference is a little bit of their profitability. I just, I'm not sure that this one really affects how... It's been, I believe that it's been overly emphasized. The other thing I would offer, though, is that I believe that many of the examples we've seen that are so offensive tend to be fill. It tends to be where they're raising the grade, and I'm not sure how much the issue is with cut, with reducing the grade. There's still some of that, because I still believe that trying to respect the existing topography is extremely valuable, but I do believe that the most concerning outcomes are those I've seen where they've put in too much fill, and they've raised houses up unnecessarily, and really created conditions that nobody would ever really want to see if they were already an existing neighbor. So I would at least suggest we might consider, or at least ask for feedback, on the idea of, is it necessary to restrict both, or do we achieve what our objective is by restricting fill? So building it up, instead of, you know, trying to stick with the existing grade, or cutting a spot down where you've got a small hill where you need to even it out. I'm not sure, but I think we should maybe consider that.
Thank you, Mark. Does the director want to quickly jump in here?
Yeah, in my conversation with the chair this afternoon, something came up that was discussed, actually, at the focus group meeting, that David facilitated back in early December. And the idea that came up, I believe it was from one of the design professionals that was at the focus group meeting, was the concept of, you've got a site, the site has, just, let's say it's square, so it has four sides, an exterior boundary of four sides, that within a certain distance of the site boundaries on each side, there would be a more limited bandwidth of cut-and-fill change that could occur, but then, in a certain distance back from the edge of the site boundaries, there would be a broader band of change that could occur, more, you know, a deeper cut or fill. So it promotes this idea of maybe tapering to the outer edges of the subject site, where there would be less noticeable grade change one way or the other, to those on the other side of the site boundaries. From what I recall, David, you can vouch for this, if you recall the same thing, that that seemed, for our citizens that were sitting in on that focus group meeting, that seemed to be an idea that got some traction with them. It's certainly something we can investigate further here, so in my conversation with the chair this afternoon, she, in the immediacy of the matter, she expressed having support for item A1, but to perhaps include a recommendation to the city council, that this may be an item that needs some revisiting in a later phase of this larger project that we're doing, to come back and have this discussion with some more refined ideas about how to successfully introduce some code language that would promote this tapering idea. So food for thought for you there.
Also, if I might add, in response to one of the comments, was that the language that's currently in the interim development regs does directly govern fill versus cut, and those dials could be adjusted. So if you felt it more appropriate to regulate fill, I believe it does currently allow for 10 feet of cut and eight feet of fill. So you could turn those dials, pretty simply, if you felt that was appropriate, in addition to what Jeff was saying. So we already have a code, we already have code language that we could bring forward, where you could turn those dials.
One more time, the chair is emphasizing, one more time, the chair is asking for an extension of the tonight's meeting.
To extend the meeting to 10 o'clock.
Second.
There's a motion before us to extend the meeting to, tonight's meeting to 10 o'clock, and it has been seconded. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion to extend the meeting to 10:00 PM has passed at 6:0. Now, is any other discussion? If not, I'd like to have Eric maybe quote what Jeff said and get him...
Well, just quickly on this, I think Mark touched on it, too. I've moved here about 20 years ago, and I worked in the, as a contractor, remodel contractor, and worked on a lot of different houses on the east side, and sent a lot of different developments. And it's amazing how many developments were done in the past with rockeries and within existing grades, and they were able to sell the homes to the market and all these things. So a lot of these issues that are coming up with this mask grading, it just isn't square with history, you know, they were able to do it then, why can't they do it now? And I can tell you, from forming concrete foundations, it's a lot easier to form a concrete foundation on a flat lot than it is when you have to step the foundation down and all these other things. So there's other kind of, and when you're, and those types of savings are attractive when you're building hundreds of homes. If you're building a couple homes, it really doesn't make much difference, but the impact on kind of the look and feel and the neighborhood character that we're all left with at the end is, you know, forever. So I think that, you know, that's what makes this regulation attractive, but I agree, we need to, it probably does need to be developed a little bit more. So I guess, the motion, I'd like to direct staff to continue developing language, code language centered around mask grading. Question number one, does that suffice?
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
For the motion before you, is there any further discussion?
Any further discussion? Jane?
I'd like to, I still think about our housing strategy, and I think about the excitement of these neighborhoods that we're trying to create, that have a lot more variation in them than they do now. I think about them in the future, future trends. I think about big buildings, and some big apartment buildings, and some, even some small commercial buildings, and I wonder how this... I'm not for mask grading, so don't think that I am, but I'm just wondering if there's a trade-off, that we can get some of that stuff that we would like, some of the character that we would like, if we offer, if we can work with somebody, rather than just have a strict, no, you can't do it. I like the idea of negotiating, and I don't think everybody out there is bad, all the developers are bad. I think that we could do something. I like working with them to get what we want.
Thank you, Jane, and I appreciate the opportunity for all of us to be able to state our views, and remember, we don't have to be unanimous. So with that said, can I call for the vote on the motion?
I'd just like to ask, we had a whole discussion about looking at the numbers, will that be part of what you'll come back and say? Is this just a yes-or-no binary, or will you come back with, here's a couple of alternatives where we could maybe just adjust the values of what we have, and try to accomplish the same thing?
Yeah, again, this is mostly about the concepts that we're going to bring forward, and then the numbers that will be included in there will be our best guess at what we should be including. With this one, we'll attempt to put together something related to blending around the edges, but that may not be possible in the timeframe.
I was thinking more about what you had described about a dialing the numbers for, you know, fill down a little bit, yeah, okay.
Okay. No further discussion, we'll call for the question. Those in favor of supporting mask grading, number six is emphasized, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
And those opposed, no. Again, it's 6:0, but still, I think staff is going to modify this, so thank you for that. We are now at fence heights, and I guess it's back to you, Jane.
Oh, boy. Well, I have voiced my opinion on fence height, and I think eight feet isn't appropriate anywhere for anything built on the property line. I think there are many more creative options out there that don't have the image and maintenance issues that an eight-foot fence has. If you think about building a wood structure on somebody's property line that they have to maintain, so that it will stay up, so that it will stay healthy, so that it won't fall down, that's too much to ask of the neighbor. There are gazebos, there are arbors, there are vines, there are hedge rows, there are, there's plant material, there's all kinds of things that you can do if you get creative. I am so opposed to that eight-foot fence going, being able to be built across the back and down the sides, that I will definitely vote no on that.
I have to agree with Jane, that the thought of an eight-foot fence, and I realize that we're only thinking about it in certain situations, but I do think about Mary Wickers' plank, and how tall eight feet is, and I would be opposed to an eight-foot fence. I think it's, I think we, there, as Jane was saying, there are other options we could think about, about plantings, other ways around this particular situation, other than just a fence.
I was going to, I think, still vote in favor of it, because the, moving from the six to the eight require a building permit, and that's, I like that, makes it simple for me, and, again, there's a dial there, okay.
I actually agree with what Jane has said. I think fences tend to create a separation between communities, between neighbors, and it's not like we don't have a provision where somebody could submit an application to the city to increase the fence to eight feet. So right now, we have that in our code, that the minimum is set to, or, you know, the maximum is set to six feet. Is that correct? I see you shaking. There is no?
We don't. The current limit, the limitation in the code prior to the adoption of the interim regs was six feet max.
So if they have to move it to more than six feet, they have to...
They would have to meet the setback. You could build a fence taller than six feet, however, that fence would have to be built meeting the setback. So you could build, say you had a 10-yard side yard, a 10-foot side yard setback... So you could build, say you had a 10-yard side yard, a 10-foot side yard setback, you'd have to build your fence at eight feet, at 10 feet back from the property line. The only other alternative would be to apply for a variance, which, for somebody who's trying to address a privacy issue, which was, which is what this is in response to, they would have to go, then be subject to a variance process.
So thank you for explaining that. I think that is important to know, but I think, I think in the previous meeting, we had also asked about how many times have we had this kind of request for variance, and it's very low. So given that propensity, I will vote for B1, no, for raising fence heights.
I'm in favor of this, but I would like, I would like to see some, and I'm not sure what brackets around it, so I like the building permit, I think that's appropriate. This one also seems like it would be appropriate to have a neighbor concurrence provision that says you can't just submit for a permit and do it without the neighbor agreeing. I think that would be a reasonable thing. I also wonder if there's not a way, and again, this is not a solution, only a question, if you have a 40 or a 50-foot property line, you know, do you want to build eight feet that whole entire distance, or can you, can you pick some reasonable limit on how much of it gets built because you're trying to deal with a privacy issue for 20 feet where there's windows or something like that, rather than saying we're going to build a massive fence around the whole, you know, along the whole back fence link? So I think we should continue to pursue this, but try to put some more provisions in there that limit, and frankly, give staff some tools to limit people's ability to just come in and apply for a permit and say, hey, I didn't talk to my neighbor, but I don't need to, I'm just applying for a permit to build a fence like it says. There should be some kind of brackets around how that gets done. And then if those situations arise where it's appropriate, and both of them agree, then fine, let them, let them build some reasonable amount of taller fence.
So I have a question. So this, this regulation does not say you can build, or does it say that you can build an eight-foot fence anywhere on your property?
It says you could build an eight-foot fence down your side yard outside of the front yard or in the rear yard. So you'd be limited to four and a half feet in the front yard, which would actually promote neighbor relations in the front yard, whereas the current rule allows you to have six feet in the front yard. So what we did was we pushed the front yard fence height down.
Right.
And we increased the fence height through a building permit in the rear. Now, most of the instances where we've seen this be something that was desirable is where you had new construction going on, and the builder of that new home or subdivision was offering to build a taller fence for the neighbor to deal with their, the issues they had with the construction and the change, et cetera, but our code didn't allow it. So in that case, I mean, I've not seen a scenario where, well, not in this city, but in other cities I've seen it, where you had neighbors that really didn't agree to the point where they wanted to build an eight-foot tall fence between them. Haven't seen that yet here, which is a good thing. So we haven't really had that, but I, but you could add the neighbor, the requirement that a neighbor agrees, neighbor endorsement, and you could also require that the agreement identifies maintenance responsibility, because that's something that I've heard by public comment, I believe, that, you know, who maintains it? You have an eight-foot tall fence, what happens when that thing starts to degrade? You know, my fence, my own house blew down in the last windstorm we had, and I don't know whether my neighbor or I should fix it, so we have to talk.
So the four-feet restriction in the front yard is, I believe that's part of the current municipal code, right?
It is not. It's only part of the interim regs.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
So when, when we're asked to decide on this, this is just limited to the eight-foot for side and backyards?
Well, what it would do is it would also reduce the front. You could, you could direct us that you want to see fences reduced in the front and then maintained at six on the side and rear.
Okay, thanks.
Well, I like the reduction of fence heights in the front, I think that's good. So if we don't keep the eight-foot in the back, I think that would be a good thing to maintain. I can understand the eight-foot, the height of the fence is high. I can see if I was neighbor A, and neighbor B wanted to put an eight-foot fence, putting it on the property line would be disturbing to me. If they wanted to put up an eight-foot fence, but they took and built the fence not on the property line, but built it two foot on their property, then the kind of, this daylight plane, again, this kind of 45-degree line coming down, it wouldn't cast a shadow in my yard any higher than the six-foot fence would been at property line. So having some variability about the fence height and its relationship to the property line, does that make sense? Build an eight-foot-high fence, but you've got to put it two foot back from the property line, let's say.
I understand what you're saying, although I, it strikes me that it might just be simpler to require a neighbor endorsement at that point.
Perhaps. I mean, the, right, with some maintenance agreements, or if it's your fence and you're going to stay in it and keep it, that's fine, but you got to get on my property to do it. You know, and then a fence could be, an eight-foot-tall fence, you could be looking at construction costs, I don't know, 20, 30 bucks a foot, you know, it can get, a chunk of money can get wrapped up pretty quick in a, in a construction of a fence that high. So I, I'm mixed here. I can appreciate the fact that it might be a developer wanting, putting in a, put an eight-foot fence, and the neighbors want that, and we're telling them they can't have that. That doesn't seem right either, so.
Yeah, that's why I say if we require neighborhood concurrence, then it's really kind of an issue between the two of them, and takes us mostly out of it with potentially some other restrictions. I would think maybe we'd consider like only one property line on it or something, that I just don't want to have this be a mass, you can build an eight-foot fence wherever you want, because that's not the intent.
Not that I get to vote, but I actually agree with that too. So, I mean, you can, you can build to the setback, you can build, if it's X feet a setback from the property line, you can build an eight-foot fence on the setback, or you can go get a neighbor agreement, bring it into the city with your building permit, and go that route. That gives choice, right?
Thank you, Jeff. Would we like to move with some of these nuances to a motion?
Yeah, I think it was really good to get that clarification that, you know, this, this fence height was not just limited to having eight feet, but also that code included reducing the fence height for front, the front side of the property. So I would definitely, you know, if we decide to go ahead with that, if we decide to consider fence height as one of the criteria for our development code, I would like to see some more things in there, you know, like the, you know, what happens in the front of the building, the side of the building, you know, building in setbacks and things like that. So would like to see it more flushed out.
So what I'm hearing is, my recommendation, we'll go ahead and vote on this, we're going to be able to discuss this once more. That's what I see. There's some positives and negatives, but, and we, so maybe I'm, the chair is asking for a vote here, but it doesn't have to be unanimous. Okay. So should we go ahead, or?
Yeah, I would, I think if there's at least a crack of consideration, then we should probably have staff continue on, and then we can always say no next time.
I like that. So what I'm hearing is a motion before us to direct staff to actually bring this fence height question one back to us, number seven, with some of the modifications that have been suggested. Is there a second to that type of motion?
Second.
Those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, Jane?
I'm not, I see that I wasn't allowed to make the motion. So I get that, Larry, but I, I would have, I would have just said no if I made the motion, but since you put it the nice way you did, I'm saying yes.
So that motion passes 6:00. Now, is there any other motion pertaining to the item number seven?
No.
That would like to be made, the fences, Jane?
No.
Okay.
I need to bring back all the, all everything we discussed, including what I said.
Oh, yes. Let's see, it's on, number eight parking.
The question here is, should all new lots created through the subdivision or short subdivision process require the equivalent of one on-street parking space be provided? And in this case, the number one is the dial. The question is the concept, so the number could be further debated, but really whether or not you think we should be requiring additional parking with new subdivisions.
And before you get started, so David, staff had a chance to talk with our public work staff related to this, and the result of that dialogue was that it's the opinion of our public work staff or city engineer that we're not creating more pavement by doing this. The, the public work standards as they exist today are still going to create that pavement. What this is going to do is promote better design to be able to have on-street parking with the design of where driveway curb cuts are going, how they relate to each other on each side of the street and so forth. And I think David has talked with you about that before, perhaps back in December, that that's, that was the, the original birthing of this concept was to do that. So we have went and had that conversation with the public work staff and gotten a result from that.
So I'm in favor of this, A1. I think we need to have greater consideration for parking, on-street parking, and so yes, I'm in favor of it.
I like the term "design," that gives, that's just great, that we, we need to do some creative designing. Hopefully this directs that.
So I think, David, do you help me understand, you know, why we have this parking as an item to consider, and it's more focused on the design than actually creating more impervious surface? So I agree with that, but I really want us to be very clear in our code language to tell that we're not adding, or, you know, HOAs or homes to create additional parking, that we want them to create better design, and I think, I don't know how easy or difficult it is going to be to convey that through code, but I would like the language to be simple and direct in clarifying that it's not going to impact the environment.
I'm in favor of yes on this one. I do think that, A, I'd like to see, I shouldn't use letters, I'd like to see a couple more examples of this to try to understand. The one you showed earlier was a bit concerning to me, that it appeared that this may be the most restrictive in some instances, and I'm not sure that that's really what our intent is. So I would like to see a couple of other examples and consider dialing that number a little differently to a, you know, 0.7, 0.8, 0.9, something to make sure that, it's very rare that this is going to control the number of units that can be developed. It should be the setbacks and other things. You know, we need adequate parking, but I also don't want to create a suburbia with nothing but parking stalls everywhere, that it needs to be a good balance, and so good design is part of that, but also making sure that we have the right number, I think, is part of it as well.
Right, so my understanding is that, as Jeff said, it really is a design thing. It's not, it's not an impervious surface thing. The impervious surface already exists, it's just how we're striping it, I guess. So in that regard, it's kind of a wash, as far, as far as that goes. I wonder about having, you know, turning the dial down, or differently for short versus long subdivisions, for example. Maybe there's, maybe you have one for a short subdivision, you have 0.75 for long ones, because you have more economies of scale, or so to speak, you get more accumulation over a larger area resulting in more parking, that the likelihood that everyone in that development's going to have a party at the same time is low. There might be some, some benefit there. I stated earlier about, we talked a little bit about this HOA-managed parking spaces and things, and that still kind of concerns me a little bit, so I, and we talked a little bit about having some hierarchy set so that they're encouraged, driven to do it in the street first, and then they do have these relief valves, so to speak, or they can do it elsewhere. But if, if there's been problems with, with parking in these developments, then I think that we've got to address that by, by requiring it better design.
I'm for A1.
I think we've heard all the commissioners speak to that, so it looks like the motion before us is to direct the staff to go ahead with A1, with bringing back some examples of design and something else that Eric said, but I can't remember.
Maybe looking a little bit at the numbers, the dials, and how they're associated with, with large subdivisions versus small subdivisions, if that's appropriate.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? The chair seeing none, would call for the vote. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. I'm still looking at the time, but it's my turn, I think, it's my turn, and my mic is on. Street frontage, question number one. I'm going to quickly, I'd almost tabled this one, but I'm going to ask the director of community development, did Public Works have any input into this?
So.
The director.
Yeah. So I did discuss this with Public Works, and the response was that it depends on what your objective is and what you're trying to achieve. If you're trying to achieve direct access to each lot by way of a driveway, then this is not something that is, they see as required because the public work standards allow for shared driveways, for example. But if the objective is to create a presence on the street for each lot, so that every street has a presence on a public, every new lot created has a presence on a public street, that this would be appropriate. So it really depends on what the objective is. There's, there's, you know, there was an alternative presented as well, that this is item A2, part two, no private road or private driveway serving more than two homes, maybe less than 30 feet in width. So what this does is it, it might, it might collide with the public work standards slightly, although I think that more, you know, in any case, the way we work is the more restrictive standard applies. So if it was more restrictive, then so be it. It is, that's just a requirement.
I'm leaning towards A2, but I'll pass it on.
Yeah, I think I have more questions on this, and would like to really understand what this would do for the existing homes, and then also, how does the street frontage work with the homes that are next to lakes, for example, you know, East Lakes of Mamish or even like Pine Lake or maybe Beaver Lake. So I'd like to understand what that means for that, and then also for newer developments, what are we trying to achieve by?
So this would only apply to new lots, lots, new lots created through the subdivision process. It would not apply to existing lots, and the requirement here would be that any new lot created would have some minimum numeric number of linear street frontage. And again, that number is a dial, so if you wanted 30 feet, you could set it at 30 feet, if you wanted more or less, then that would be the requirement. And part of that requirement is, is that every home has a presence, a street front presence, right? That we don't have, one of the comments that we have heard repeatedly is that the -- That we don't have, one of the comments that we have heard repeatedly is that, and it also came out pretty heavily in the, the focus group, is that the feeling is that developers are trying to cram homes in every nook and cranny in the city. And part of that comes from the fact that we have homes that are tucked away way in the back, you know, there might be a driveway, private driveway that'll serve 5 or 6 homes. Public Works standards have changed over time, so you are more limited in the number of homes that can be served by a shared driveway or a, a private street of a certain size. So there is a more restrictive standard that applies. However, the Public Works standards do still allow for homes to be tucked away behind other homes and serviced by a shared access, whether it's a private, a shared driveway or a private street. So the question is whether that's acceptable as a matter of character and form, or whether we should push designers to design projects where every new home created has a presence on the street. It's also a ripeness question. Oftentimes, developers will, will take what they can get and develop it, as opposed to waiting with the longer-term vision of obtaining a larger piece of property that might be a combination of multiple parcels with different owners, or they had, where they've had to wait until one of the properties was available for the whole thing to work. So the, the way, the way, the way we have seen this play out is that developers have taken what they can get and just gone ahead and developed it, when, if they had been able to obtain the parcels next door, it would have made a lot more sense, and the project would have worked a lot better. So what this does is that if you were to require that every new property created has street frontage, is it would require that developers are more deliberate in their designs, and more deliberate in what projects they pursue, and it would address the ripeness issue that, that we've identified, that we have seen in, in projects in the city.
And would this, oh, sorry.
Well, again, this is the 10th day of Christmas. Do we want to have a motion extend to the 11th day or sometime in between? Chair, entertain a motion.
I'll extend a motion to extend it till 11 o'clock, just to be safe.
Yeah, this, thank you.
Doesn't obligate us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Should I let them vote on this? In favor of 11 o'clock extension, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed?
I might have to leave.
Okay. It's, vote, Jane, are you voting against it, or?
Voting against.
It's extending to 11. You can leave, but.
I'm, I'm voting for it, but I might have to leave.
Okay. Then chair declares that it extended meeting tonight until 11:00 PM.
Question on street frontage. Do you consider alleyways also as part of this, and how does that affect street frontage?
The way it's currently written is, it would be a public street frontage. So anything that's considered a public street, you can change that, and you can say, you know, private street or public street frontage, but not allow for shared driveway to, you know, that, that you'd have to have a connection to that larger access point. One of the complaints we've heard from developers is that that takes away the ability to do what's called a flag lot, which, or a tuck-behind type development, where they'll use an access easement to service 1 or 2 homes behind an existing home. It's a very common form of development, so, you know, that's one consideration there.
Thank you.
If the power goes out, we may have to end the meeting. So I, I would, I have a couple of concerns about this. One is that in a neighborhood, we're actually right across from where I live, that was built in the 80s, there's at least 3 flag lots that I can think of. They're single homes, they're not multiple homes, they have their own separate driveway. I don't find it particularly concerning, it, it seems to work pretty well. I also have a concern here that, I think that there's been some confusion, at least on my part and maybe others, about the interpretation of private roads versus public roads and what happens with a private road. We saw some images of a private road that was really bad design, poorly executed, that you could call it a shared driveway, it wasn't wide enough for people to back out, lots of problems with that. But there are also other private roads, sometimes constructed, that don't look like that. They're a road that goes through a piece of property to a neighborhood. I'm not a big fan of private roads, but I'm not also sure that we should restrict people from being able to build appropriate private roads by saying that, you know, homes have to have a public frontage. I also am a little concerned that when we say 30 feet, there are always going to be instances where that may not work exactly perfectly, because you have an outside corner or a cul-de-sac, and some instances may end up being a little bit less than 30 feet. So I had kind of proposed a couple of things, trying to deal with some of that. Maybe they're completely out in left field or off of, you know, the surface of Mars or something, but I kind of suggested maybe that we, that we adjust that to say that there's, you know, you have to have an average of 30, but no less than 20. So if you have some of those instances, maybe you do a flag lot, and the driveway flares out to 20 feet, and you, you've got it, right? Or you have an inside, or, yeah, an inside corner, outside corner, where, you know, you need to have a couple of those that are a little bit under 30 feet. I don't know if that works or not, but I worry that we're forcing the homes to get spread out more than maybe what we really intend. The other thing is the, the private roads, I don't even know how the code really applies to a private driveway or private road, but those instances that we saw that were bad, I think if we could regulate that the private roads or shared driveways that have multiple homes served have to be wider to begin with, then maybe that solves a bunch of the problems around parking, where do you put the garbage cans, backing out, and so forth. That won't solve the snow removal and who takes care of my road issue. You know, anytime a private road gets built, you're going to get those questions, but if we make them more appropriately designed, then maybe that, that's better as well. Again, David, you might tell me that those things are, you know, crazy and inappropriate, but I do think that just the, the blonde saying that every house has to have 30 feet has some issues with it, that whether we're talking about older neighborhoods or new neighborhoods, that has not always been the history of the community, and maybe will cause problems with future development as well.
This kind of gets, I think this gets the community character a bit. I do appreciate Mark's suggestion about having some average, right, to deal with the realities on the ground. I'm still not convinced that it may be a flat, a flag lot or something here and there is, is acceptable, but when, when you have, you know, the half a dozen homes off of one shared driveway, it doesn't, doesn't support the community character that I think that we're trying to support. You know, the, the front porch where you're conversing with your neighbors, having a walk with the dog, I mean, that just won't happen when you're, when that other kind of situation is going on. So I'd like to see a little more examples of how, maybe taking the, the poor example we saw in the aerial imagery and, and seeing how some new regulation might play out in that, in that instance.
Am I up? I don't see 30-foot fronts making a big difference. I think we'll, with 30-foot fronts that are repeated over and over again, we just get the, still get that cookie cutter look. In fact, it, it might even be worse. It's, it's more about the setbacks between the units than it is about the, the frontage, in my book, because we're just seeing this repetition that goes on forever, and if we put that in the code, I think that's what we'll get. I like the interest and the variation we get with houses that face different directions. I don't know why they all have to face the street in great big long rows, I think that's what's wrong with our streets. We don't want to walk down them, they're boring, just one after the other, after the other. So I'm not for A, and as far as private roads are concerned, I do live on one, and I, we have to scoot over to get 2 cars by, and I like it. It makes the cars go slower, the scale is right, people play on it, the kids play on it, people walk on it, everybody's tuned in, nobody speeds up and thinks it's a speedway. I like the narrower, kind of woo-nervous look of the, of the road, and I'm not for a 30-foot wide paved area everywhere. So that's my opinion.
I have to say honestly, I need more information about what this would do to neighborhood character if we required every house to have 30 feet of street frontage. I think we had some public comment at city council where there was concern for private driveways than having to convert to a public street, where they'd have to have sidewalks on both sides and it ending in a cul-de-sac, and then what would turn a private road into a public road, and where the public would then feel free to park on that road, and they would know, they would lose that element of privacy. And I thought that was an interesting point. I honestly don't know how I feel about it, because I could, I hear what Jane is saying about makes neighborhoods more interesting, but then I also hear the concerns that residents call into city about garbage cans and those kinds of issues that are left behind after the builder leaves the subdivision and doesn't make proper provision for those kinds of situations that arise, and leave it up to the homeowner association to figure it out and cause friction between neighbors. So I'm, I'm really kind of torn about this, and I feel like I need a little bit more information, and maybe some more examples.
That was my word "table" used earlier, but as I, I like Mark's number A2, because as I read through both of them, it seems like there's an opportunity within those 2 items to create some neighborhood character. Almost, I don't want to use the word "forcing," but allowing for developer or builder to be creative in what they're doing there. That's all.
I already spoke, I had questions.
I hear nothing, go ahead.
So if I could just interject 1, 1 thing, and that, and that is, the issue here is that there's a gap in our code, and the gap is that we don't really have the tools we need to get good design. We don't really have the tool that we need to push a builder to actually do the right thing. They have Public Works standards that they can use, and there isn't really any tool in the Public Works standards to make them do the right thing either. So the question here is, you know, what, what is the right tool that would push a designer to do the right thing? And I don't have an answer for this one, because I think it depends on who you are and what you like, and what you consider to be the right look and feel of your neighborhood. The, the one thing I, I can say is that without making any changes here, we will continue to see projects that are much smaller in scale, where there are tear downs, where someone's maybe tearing down 1 or 2 homes, and building stuff that, that continues to use private streets and shared driveways, that are a combination of different tools that may not, may look a little odd or something, and that, and maybe that's okay. But what, one of the issues that has been identified through some of our transportation analysis in the city is that we have a lot of roads that go nowhere. And what this does is it causes a continuation of that pattern, and it causes a continuation of lack of foresight and thinking about connections and, as development occurs, and what it does is it's one, it's one, one-off project after another that just provides a dead-end road to somewhere with a few homes tucked behind it. So what we're trying to get away from is that pattern, and we're trying to get away, get towards more of a foresight into the future and larger projects, and trying to push builders to think about, if they're building something, how they bring a public road into their development project, and where that might connect in the future. So those are the tools that we need to get there, are things like this, where we require that every home has a street frontage.
Thank you for that explanation. Does that fit in with Mark's? Can you? Okay. So.
Oh, no, I was shaking my head, because I, I think, you know, when David explained the reasoning behind the street frontage, I think, especially related to connectivity of the roads, I think that makes more sense. So I would, I think if we had to make a motion, I would just say, yes, we want to consider street frontage as a criteria, you know, in going forward for the development code, and then maybe you can suggest some language, and then we can review that, so.
Is there a second to that motion? We'll have comments in a minute. There's a second, any further comment? If not, we'll call for the, the question. Those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, no. Now we're moving on to, without an extension of time, we're moving on to number 10, which is daylight planes, and everybody's been waiting for this. Rattusha?
Should I just make a motion right away? Sorry, just kidding.
Why don't you make a motion right off?
I, I think, you know, the daylight plane, I think that was not part of the initial interim regulations, but was suggested by Commissioner Baughman, and I think I've seen, is that correct? And, and Eric Brooks, yes, and Commissioner Brooks. And I, I think it's been very educational for me personally, just to understand how it works and the really high impact that it can have on our character of our city, and also on our, on the development. So I, I definitely, you know, would like us to consider daylight plane to be considered as part of our development code.
Is there a second to that motion?
Well, I'd like to.
Go ahead.
So I, this intuitively to me seems like a, an obvious idea, but I've also heard that maybe there are some challenges with implementation and management of that. So I guess my question is, is there a simple example of how that's a challenge, and could we look at, based on your experience, a way to craft something that wouldn't create so many challenges to use this as a criteria? Or is it just going to be difficult, no matter what?
Yeah, I, I think the easiest way to describe the complexity is topography, because on a flat lot, in a, in a flat scenario, works great. When you start to incorporate all sorts of technology, or excuse me, topography, it, it tends to get tricky. And the reason for that is, is that as you follow your property line, and you're applying your daylight plane, or as you're following your setback line and you're applying your daylight plane, the topography changes. So the daylight plane is not flat and smooth like you'd want it to be. So the jurisdictions that have this, that I'm aware of, have some issues in applying it in a scenario where there's topography. I don't know the, the solution. I, I know that it could be a great tool if there was a solution, but they have struggled with it. That's the reason why other, one of our other jurisdictions, that's a comparable jurisdiction, only uses it as a method if you're not wanting to apply the Florida area ratio. So they only use it in instances where you're not wanting to do the FAR. So I think, just looking around the city and thinking about Inglewood, Tamarack, some of those areas, it'd be really hard to apply in those areas. I don't know how we'd even do it. That's my concern.
One suggestion might be, as you were talking through there, maybe the daylight plane springs off of an average-grade plane, so you kind of use, you seek some kind of middle ground to kind of help address those complexities that come about. But you, you, you made a little bit of a, maybe it was a slip-up, but you, you mentioned technology. Well, technology could be used to manage these problems. Today's technology in the design world, complex planes and things, it's not an issue, and you can build, you can, you can have that physically represented in three-dimensional space, and you can build your house up underneath that and not punch through that plane. So I mean, technology's out there to allow designers to handle this issue. The technology may not be available to staff to have. The technology may not be available to staff to verify that the designers are doing what they should be doing, and I think that that's a challenge across the board, right? On many, whether you're talking about surveys that disagree or whatever, I mean, what tools does the staff have to say which one's right? You just don't. So I think you're always kind of dependent on what the applicants are providing to you. So demanding more from the applicants is an option, I think, too. And I'm wondering if this is going to be, if this is applied in addition to regulation or number two, item number two, or if it's a standalone thing, I think that has a lot of, it can lead to two different endpoints.
So I believe this is something that is fairly different than setbacks. For me, for the purpose of application, this is something that really looks at more at the Balkan scale of a building and placement of a building.
Right.
And what it's doing is it's attempting to diminish sort of that looming wall, similar to the facade restriction that we have. And if you look at specifically the Anacortes example, you can see how application of a daylight plane would require the stepping back of a second story or a third story.
Right.
Which would provide quite a bit of architectural diversity, modulation, those sorts of things. So there is definitely a potential benefit to applying it. It's just that I have this, I've had some experience with this, and I feel that, given the topography that we deal with, it would be really hard to apply.
Even with an average-grade type of concept?
Well, with an average-grade type of concept, then at the top of the lot, you would be artificially constraining the home as compared to how it could be built otherwise. It's just, it's, I can't think of a way, maybe there is a way to make it work, and we could go look at it, but, I mean, my feeling is that just the diversity of each one of the lots in this city makes it more challenging.
So you think that maybe City of Anacortes has a flatter topography, easier time with their topography? I don't think so.
Not necessarily.
So, I mean, there's got to be some way to overcome it. And the reason I ask if it's in concert, because one of the examples spring the daylight plane off of the property line, and the other one does it off of the setback line. So that's where I think my comment was kind of driving towards, you know, if it's in concert with a different regulation, it could lead us differently than without, perhaps. It says the property line at any location, and so that means front, rear, back, all the way around, right? When we're talking about applying the 45-degree upward and inward along a line horizontally perpendicular to the property line at any location, that means all property lines? Is that what?
You could apply it that way. There's different ways of writing that.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I would comment that, you know, I think the reason that this is attractive, certainly to me, is the underlying objective, which is to create or to reduce the ability of somebody to build a house or whatever that blocks the view to the sky of the neighbors. So I don't know if there's a way to, different way to deal with that, but I still think that that's an admirable objective to try to achieve with our development regulations, to make sure that somebody can't come in and cast a shadow on somebody's window that is an existing or a to-be-existing neighbor. I don't know if there's a different way to do that, if the setbacks will essentially accomplish that, if we can reduce the facade height to try to accomplish that. But somehow, the underlying objective, to me, is still a good one, and that is, you know, to protect the neighbors or to create an environment where adjacent houses are not shadowing each other excessively. So if there's a different way to achieve that, that's different than daylight plane, great, right? I mean, I don't, whatever ideas you might have, but I think that's a good objective to try to work on, maybe in the future, maybe now.
Director Thomas?
Just quickly, as Commissioner Brooks was speaking a moment ago, Commissioner Baughman just hit on what I was thinking to a degree. I was thinking about, does item five, the regulatory tool for building facade, is that working? Are they working against each other, those two ideas? And so, to your point, Commissioner Baughman, we kind of have come full circle here, back to the part of the discussion from item five, which is maybe foregoing, what number is that, item 10? Maybe we do need to think at our next meeting about the dial on item five and bringing the dial down. Or foregoing item five and continuing to study this item 10 to see where we end up with that. But I'm, my, just my reactionary sense is that these two things are working against each other a little bit, so.
I came to that, too. My question on here was, does this conflict with item five? But I really like the idea. I think it's dark here. It's dark most of the year here, and I love the idea of having us be sensitive to light. And when I look at what's being built, these very tall, boxy buildings, one right next to the other, I think this helps us get away from that. So I support it, but I think it might be in conflict with five.
So if I recall right, in working on some of these, the objective was to provide solar access based on the azimuth of the sun at summer equinox or at equinox, and that that was the premise behind the 45-degree angle, was that in that time of year, if you were in your yard next door, that you would not be blocked absent trees and other things of the sun? And that was the premise behind that. So maybe there's another way to apply that theory to this, where, you know, someone has to model based on the equinox angle of the azimuth of the sun, that they're not blocking solar access to the neighbor. Maybe it's a solar access item that we apply, which is the same as daylight plane, it's just a little bit different because instead of trying to base it from a certain height of the ground, you're considering the actual azimuth of the sun and the angle of incidence of that, and you can show that your roof line is designed that way. And then that corresponds to the north, south, east, west, and the geometry of the lot, you know. I think that's another way to look at it.
Right. That's something we do often, is shadow studies in design, and you're able to go into SketchUp or whatever, and you can tell it, I want to know where the sun's at in this day and this time, and it shows what the shadows are going to do any place in the world. So that's another technological effort that we could use.
I like that idea, David. I think that's.
I do, too. And I just want to quickly, I don't want to drag this out, but in the weather detective, Peter Wolin says something similar to that. He's talking about the horticultural aspect and the flora and floral of the sun reaching the ground and things like that. He's all for trees, but he also includes this, so, okay. It's a tough one.
So I was just going to say that I think that we could drop this off the list with the caveat that, as part of item five, will include some study and discussion of just what you described with sunlight access to adjacent properties. Do you think that would be an acceptable approach for you guys to have enough direction of what to do?
第二个
It sounds, there's been a motion to essentially drop this, delete this from our number 10 and have it included, the concept included in number five. Those in favor of that motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Those opposed, no. Six, zero, and we're on to critical area works permit. Mark, is that back to you?
This one's a simple one.
Yeah, is there any, is there any cons to this, that anybody has expressed that they're real?
Most, what this is, is basically a little bit of a code cleanup.
Yeah.
Most cities have a pretty clear statement in their clear and grade code requirements that any work in a critical area requires a permit.
So maybe we should just say, is there anybody that is opposed to this?
Is there anybody sitting at the dais tonight that is opposed to this? Number 11, signify by saying yes? If not, the motion unanimously without a vote carries. Jeff?
Not voting, Larry, so.
Oh, you're just holding on like we are.
I do have something else to say once you're ready to move on.
Yeah.
So a quick director's report to close out here. So on the 17th, oh, are you, do you want to do public comment first, or?
Yes, well, I think we should. Next item on the agenda is public comment on agenda items. Each speaker will have seven minutes to sit. Please speak into the microphone and state your name and address clearly. We have one gentleman coming up to the mic, and it looks like no one else is interested, so.
At 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. I think you guys did a really, you know, terrific job chatting through all these things. I only have a single comment on the, on the second to the last comment about the lighting and the angles, what's that called?
Daylight.
Daylight plane. You might consider adding some language that based on the grade of the site and how the neighbors relate, there could be some adjustment to that. If it's level site, it is one thing, but if it's going up pretty steep and the rock is maybe so, when you're tied into number five and/or maybe on mass grading in number six, maybe those could all be, you know, intertwined in some sort of a nexus or something. That's it.
Thank you very much, Paul. Jeff?
Thank you, Vice Chair Crandall. A quick director's report. We were a little remiss at the beginning of the meeting. You got it underway so quickly. We wanted to take a moment to introduce one of our new assistant planners, Anthony Mariswan, who's been running the controls here tonight. He and another assistant planner, Andrew Johnson, have been with us for about six weeks now? Yeah, going on seven weeks here, really quick. So we're really pleased to have the two of them on board with us. And throughout the course of this year, they're primarily focused on development permitting and learning the front counter and working with customers, reviewing building permits and so forth. But they'll both have the opportunity to get up to this mic, I guess, at some point this year, and we want them, we want to find out what they have in them in terms of public presentations and so forth. So you'll be hearing from them. But in the meantime, Anthony is going to be splitting duties, serving as the clerk for the planning commission with Sarah, who you well know at this point, to make sure that we've got, we're too deep in all of our functions throughout our different programs here at the city, so we wanted to make sure we've got two people trained for that that can help us with that. So that was one item. Second item, your schedule for the next couple of meetings here. So on the 17th, we're going to come back with some code construction and then those other things that we've discussed here this evening. We all took really good notes here this evening, so we're not going to miss anything. David and I are a little bit compressed on the 17th in terms of stop time. So I did talk with the chair about this earlier this afternoon. I'm wondering if the commission might be willing to have a little bit earlier start time on the 17th, perhaps a 5:00 PM or a 5:30 PM, with the hopes that we wouldn't go until 10:35, but we might have it wrapped up somewhere in the vicinity of about 7:30, 7:45. That would really help us, so we would.
They're seeing a nod of pretty good approval, but we'll.
So we'll have.
Why don't you pick 5:30? Is that okay?
Yeah.
I can make it.
Okay.
We could do five. I can do five.
I could do five, too.
Jane, can you do five on the 17th? Mark is a yes.
Is he?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrison, are you good for 5:00?
I'm up for five.
Yes. Could I ask the director, is that just the two items? Is there anything else?
One more item.
Okay.
So we'll have Sarah notice the meeting on the 17th for 5:00 PM. It'll be a special meeting start time then. And then, of course, David's mentioned this a couple times here this evening, your public hearing then on the code that we're going to bring forward to you on the 17th is scheduled for a special meeting on January 31st. The plan is that we're not going to have a meeting on February 7th in lieu of having the extra meeting in January on the 31st to kind of try and balance your workload out a little bit. That concludes the director's report.
Well, thank you. And I was going to have an exit applaud for Anthony, we still can, because I'm going to applaud heavily when we get this thing over. I did want to say one thing I didn't get to say in mass grading, but if you read the papers, the City of Issachah didn't permit some walls be constructed at Talis, but at the Talis Development. But remember, the word talis means a slope formed especially by an accumulation of rock debris. I don't know why they did that and didn't figure out what the outcome was going to be. Okay. At this time, the chair is requesting a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Those strongly in favor of approving the motion to adjourn signify by stating yes. Those opposed to adjournment indicate something. Hearing nothing, the meeting is adjourned by a vote six to zero at 10:35 PM. And the chair's last comment, may 2019 be a pleasant and productive year for all.
You're here.
So whose job is it to report, Shanna, that you ran the meeting till 10:30?
I know.
Good job, Larry.
Might not be asked again.
I know how that works.